Good morning session in Portland City Council. Carla, please call the roll.
Fritz.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Hardesty. You daily.
I'm here. Oh, okay, it's unmuted now, but I couldn't unmute myself.
Wheeler. I am also here. We'll now turn it over to legal counsel for some of the rules of decorum. Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. If it does not, you may be ruled out of order. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience who would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Please remain seated in council chambers unless entering or exiting. If you are filming the proceedings, please do not use bright lights or disrupt the meeting. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you very much. Carla, I understand all five communication slots today may want to come up together. Is that correct?
That's correct, but there may only be two of them who are here today.
All right. Why don't you read all five names and those who are here may come up.
Item 215, request of Sally F. Franzman Cecil to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. Item 216, request of Anthony Benson Bango to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. Item 217, request of Mariah Allen Claire to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. 218, request of Mary A. Avalon to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers. And 219, request of Lou Church to address council regarding Portland Gray Panthers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Name for the record, three minutes each.
Sally Franzman Cecil.
Would you like to go ahead and start, Sally?
Sure, that's fine. Sally Franzman Cecil, I think I'm supposed to report my name for the record again. Elders are too often invisible and stereotyped. Portland Gray Panthers urges that you view issues coming before you through a lens that takes the lives and needs of elders into account, especially those of the most vulnerable of elders. Those who are low income, have disabilities, are people of color and veterans of our generation. We are particularly concerned with the increasing population of houseless elders, the continuing shortage of affordable housing, long waiting lists for public housing meant for elders and people with disabilities, and the often dreadful state of living conditions in available public housing. To this latter end, we unequivocally support the efforts of public housing tenants and indeed any low-income tenants to organize tenant unions such as Community Alliance of Tenants to empower themselves for collective demands for better living conditions and treatment. We urge you as members of the City Council to really see elders in all our diversity. There are conflicting interests between even elders who own their own homes, low-income housing elders, and people whose circumstances are that they are living on the streets. Portland Gray Panthers sees elders' life situations as a fluid continuum in which people's circumstances can flow from one into another. It is in the interest of social justice that societies and therefore government, let's see, there we go, are responsible for creating that flow in an upward direction to better life circumstances. I think that's taking almost all of my three minutes, so I don't think I'm going to ramble on.
You have another minute or so, if you'd like.
Excuse me?
You have a little more time.
Oh, I still got 48 minutes. Well, I can talk a little bit more about, I can talk a little bit more about the issue of stereotyping. I do feel that there's a lot of times an assumption that there's a safety net that doesn't really exist for everybody. And of course, the safety net of being eligible for public housing doesn't help you very much when there's a two-year waiting list. You're liable to be in some situation of housing insecurity or even on the streets while you're waiting. So, you know, that is definitely a concern for, you know, why are people there when there's supposedly a safety net? Because there isn't a big enough safety net, too many holes.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
Good morning.
My name's Lou Church. I'm with Portland Gray Panthers as well. Due to inconvenient things like work, some of our scheduled speakers signed up, people didn't make it in today. However, we've been looking at things vis-à-vis think globally, act locally. For example, Francisco Aguirre, immigrant rights activist, has come to our PSU strategy meetings twice now, is from El Salvador, and along with ICE is concerned about Venezuela. In terms of think globally, act locally, Panthers have noted that the Gang of Five, Trump, Pence, Pompeo, Bolton, and Elliott Abrams, seem to be focused on grabbing Venezuela's oil, a country with the largest oil reserves in the world. This is not what the President of the United States once stated himself, "I need to grab women's pussies," quote unquote. This is just an attempt to grab oil by handling Trump's sock puppet in Caracas, the self-declared President Gaito. Backing a self-declared politician is akin to our own Nick Fish here declaring himself a self-declared mayor, especially since Donald Trump has already expressed dismay towards Ted Wheeler and Nicolas Maduro. No matter how much Nick Fish may or might want to be mayor, he still has to run for that specific office first. Panthers in Portland are also following local issues: gun control in Salem, housing, the disarm PSU campaign, and transit TRIMET issues. On housing, we want to express sympathy for politicians like Alyssa Kenny-Geyer and Nick Fish, who have cancer diagnoses. Like Francis Aguirre, Alyssa Kenny-Geyer has been able to come to two Panther meetings at Portland State on housing. Alyssa's been a great voice for rent control in Salem. We urge the legislature in Salem to ban assault weapons and high-caliber magazine sales in Oregon. Like rent control, we need gun control now. The disarm PSU campaign continues to get the three-card Monte from PSU's $600,000 a year president, Ramat Shirashi. We urge Ramat to take away guns from campus cops today and for Diego Hernandez Bill in Salem to pass to do that for both U of O and Portland State Campus Cops. We also urge Jordan Schnitzer, Portland State Mega donor, to stop flying Shirashi on the Schnitzer private jet to California's Bohemian Grove Conclave. Shirashi needs to get off his tuffet and disarm campus cops now. Lastly, since we turned in 1,400 signatures on petitions to the unelected TRIMET board to try to keep Fairless Square a while back, the board said no. We hope to work with Chloe or Commissioner Newdally to systemically reform TRIMET and keep the four MAX stops downtown that have been targeted by TRIMET general manager Doug Mussolini Kelsey for what he wants to make the MAX trains run on time. TRIMET's not a Starbucks circa 1935 in Rome, Italy. TRIMET's our transit system in Portland, Oregon, in 2019.
Thank you both for your testimony. And the other three individuals did not show up. Is that correct?
Two are at work and one's sick, sorry.
Very good.
Marie's been sick for three weeks.
I can relate. No problem. Carla, have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
We've had no requests.
Please call the roll.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
You daily.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The consent agenda is adopted. Commissioner Fish?
We have a couple minutes before the time certain. Could we read 232 and I'm going to pull it back to my office?
Yes, please, Carla, read item number 232.
Authorize commissioner in charge of Portland Parks and Recreation or Designee to execute agreements for the acquisition of real properties to expand the park system.
And Commissioner Fish has requested that that be pulled back to his office, and so we will do that. We stand in recess for three minutes until 9:45 when we can commence with the time certain Folks, we are now back in session. Carla, could you please read our first time certain item, number 220?
Age-friendly Portland Initiative Report to Council.
Good morning. Our first item today is the Age-friendly Portland Initiative Report to the Council, which is introduced by Commissioner Fish. Just a brief bit of background here, in 2013, the Portland City Council adopted the action plan for an age-friendly Portland, which aims to move our city towards being a place where older adults can continue to thrive in our community. And this is our updated report. Commissioner Fish, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and colleagues, I'm proud to serve as the council liaison to the Age-friendly Portland Initiative. In 2006, the World Health Organization started the Global Age Friendly Project based on two trends: population aging and urbanization. In 2011, Portland became the first U.S. city to be certified as age-friendly, and two years later, the City Council, as the mayor noted, unanimously approved an action plan for an age-friendly Portland. Today, that action plan is moving us towards becoming a better community for people of all ages and abilities. I'd like to welcome all of our panelists this morning. Alan, I understand that you're going to do the introduction, so take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Fish, Mayor Wheeler, City Council. It's my honor to be here today. I'm going to skip some of the introductions because I know we're tight on schedule about myself, but I want to explain that we have a great group today, so the first two presentations will include presentations from myself and from Metropolitan Family Service. Then we have Ruby Hotten-Pitts and Shayna Pittman-Frank, who will come from ARP Oregon and Elders in Action, and some very brief introductions from some of our volunteers. We'd like to leave time for engaging with you, answering questions, to move forward. So, to talk about these demographic imperatives, I think it's important to move beyond what the WHO's 2006 kind of demographic trends were and to understand what we in Portland and the region are dealing with. So there are two major demographic imperatives. We will continue to diversify as a region and will continue to age as a region. Metro estimates that our seven-county region is going to grow about 40% from 2020 to 2060, and the proportions of Asians and Pacific Islanders, Black, Latinx, and Native American populations will grow as the population of white, or the proportion of white populations will decline. We're going to see a decline from 2010 of 77.8% in the white population to about 57.1% in our region. So I think it's important to consider as we look at aging, that intersection with race and a number of other intersections as well. To get to the demographic imperative related to aging, it's really important to note that both the number of older adults and the proportion of older adults within each race category will continue to grow through 2060. Those look different when we're looking specifically at different race categories, which I'll describe next. Also, we're going to see a tremendous amount of cohort changes. So, right now, we're kind of in the midst of a real interesting, some might call it generational battle, the pulls between Boomers and Millennials, kind of understanding where Gen X and the next generation kind of fit here. So the graph that is currently in front of you shows the changes of birth cohorts over time. So cohorts are essentially a generation or a group that's defined. And you can see, by the time we reach 2060, the Baby Boomers will cease to be a major part of our age structure, which is interesting. But a very important thing to note, and we talk about generational conflict and we say, well, Millennials are larger than Boomers currently, that is true. They're the largest cohort that we have that exists, but Boomers are the elders of the future, right? As of two years from now, Boomers will be covered by the Age Discrimination in Employment Act, right? They are becoming elders before our eyes faster than we note. So this is, this is an intergenerational conversation. It's about folks who are younger and older, not just older adults.
Dr. Doherty, could you just remind us or tell us what are the approximate spans of each of those things? Because I think some of us don't even know which group we're in.
Yeah, so, that's a good question.
I do not know we could find it.
And don't leave out Gen X, because they keep leaving us out.
You know, you know, it's interesting.
Not here, but elsewhere.
I'm a Gen Xer. I watched an amazing kind of skit on Saturday Night Live where Kenan Thompson was basically saying Gen X is just sitting on the sidelines and letting everything burn down around us, which is not the case, where it just happened to be a smaller cohort sandwiched between two very large cohorts. So cohorts tend to range from about 15 to 20 years. The Boomers are from 1946 to 1964, the birth years. And I couldn't tell you with any specificity what the other birth cohorts were as far as the years started.
But that's the anchor, and obviously the greatest generation is the World War I, folks.
Exactly, yeah. So we're losing some of the value and the wisdom and experience from some of these cohorts, which is important to note as well.
Thank you.
It's a good question. So I'm going to get a little geeky here and talk about population pyramids. And the concept of a population pyramid emerged originally because we had more younger people at the base of the pyramid and less older people at the top of the pyramid. So it literally had a pyramid shape. As we move forward, the demographic transitions that are occurring in the United States and the world have us going from high mortality and high fertility rates to low mortality and low fertility rates. And what's happening is the rectangularization or the changing structure of our age pyramid. So they're no longer big on the bottom and skinny at the top. So what's in front of us here are the Black and Latinx populations, as estimated by Metro. You can see in particular, the 2060 population of the Black population is very kind of skinny in the middle. It's almost a rectangular going up and down, which means there are more older people on the top than there were previously, and less younger people to support that population. We talk about dependency ratios sometimes, which are the number of working people in a population, requires us to think about working beyond a traditional retirement age, but also how we're able to support those communities. On the right is the Latinx population, and this has more of a structure that's akin to a pyramid, big on the bottom, small on the top. I think the most important thing to note is that this will continue to shift over time, and we won't have those large groups of younger people balancing out like we had previously. I'm going to lay off the review of Age-friendly Portland, but I do want to note that, starting in 2016, the city of Portland has provided support for the initiative. There has been work around housing and some of the things I'm going to discuss today. So that's an important context as we think about where we go next. With respect to the 2017-2018 funding, there are six major areas that we focused on: an Aging Well Conference, the Age Friendly Business and Age Smart Employer Awards, age equity efforts, civic engagement efforts and new opportunities that are emerging, consultation with city bureaus and partners, and housing visitability. And I'm adding this image to the right. This is a paper that I co-wrote with a student who was finishing her master's in public health, and it just underscores the fact that Portland State is able to do unfunded work with the city of Portland to bring students to the table, to work on field experiences, capstone projects, and other projects that I think is a really, a real resource to the community. This is not something we're asking for funding for, it's just something I want to note because PSU is an amenity for the city and the age-friendly efforts. With respect to our consultation with the city bureaus and partners, I just want to note that our work with residential infill is focused on visitability, the concept of a barrier-free entrance and some other accessibility features within the home. We are working with Better Housing by Design, the multifamily project, to understand how social spaces and design for older adults, including visitability, should and could be implemented. And then more recently, we've been working with various folks from the Portland Water Bureau, as well as convening project staff across bureaus to look at new opportunities for alignment. The image that's at the right is very important to note. This is the Bureau Planning and Sustainability doing a forum with older adults and members of the disability community. They were bringing them in to really explain what residential infill was and to try and get their input directly into that project. Additionally, we've been working with the Portland Housing Bureau on a report called Age Friendly Living: Breaking Down Barriers to Accessibility Codes. For anybody who's wonky and inaccessible, it's very complicated and difficult to understand. So we brought in some planners and some architects who essentially for $1,500 helped write a report to Portland Housing Bureau to help align some of this. We continue to be a liaison to a number of different organizations that are age-related in the community, as well as state, national, and international organizations. And I'm working actively on the OCCL Code Change Committee and looking at how age, in particular, might be an area that we look at to include in our civic engagement of the future. Very briefly, I want to note that our Aging Well Conference in 2018 was excellent. We had Dr. Fernando We had Dr. Fernando Torres-Gill come out from the UCLA Center for Policy Research on Aging. Dr. Hill was the Assistant Secretary for Aging under President Clinton, so he was an amazing speaker to bring out. He has family here, which was a big reason why we were able to get him fairly cheaply. I think he really made some concessions for us. With respect to the Age Friendly Business and Age Smart Employer Awards, I'm going to defer to my colleague Shayna Pittman-Frank to discuss that later. With our work on age equity and civic engagement, I would like to say that in that 2017-2018 funding, it was a chance for us to start the conversations and to start working with folks in the community. And so we've been able to begin some of those conversations, but we've got a long way to go. I think it's important to know that the coalitions of community of color have invited me to be a part of their board meeting and to try and start working with their member organizations to better understand what they're doing, where they're doing it, before we start thinking beyond what next steps could be there. It's really important to listen to those communities, and I appreciate Marcus Monday's kind of embracing of the age equity work that we've done. With respect to civic engagement, in addition to the Civic Life Code Change Committee, our civic engagement committee has made a really important point. They said civic engagement should be a part of everything that we do. It shouldn't just exist within a committee. So what can we do to go beyond our committee's work and to infuse this into what we're doing moving forward? So where do we go from here? It's important to note that Generations United International Conference is coming to town in June. I know that there are invitations out to a number of people that will either be speaking at or attending a kickoff and/or the conference. We have a report that was funded through special appropriations this year called the State of Aging in Portland 2019. That will be released in the summer. It's a collaboration between the Institute on Aging and the Population Research Center at Portland State. We're on track for an October 2019 Age Friendly Age Smart Business Awards, kind of second award ceremony. We are really interested in improving this understanding of age equity, civic and social engagement across the life course. We will continue to advance age friendliness in the work we do through our partners. And I'd like to leave my comments off by saying, I highly encourage you to consider the age-friendly city government position that the Bureau Planning and Sustainability had developed as a part of their Directions-to-develop package. I know that the city budget office did not recommend that, but I think it's an important thing to consider moving forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Judy Strand from Metropolitan Family Service.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to see all of you and an honor to be here. I'm Judy Strand from Metropolitan Family Service, and my co-presenter, Koi Vu, is the Director of the Asian Family Center from ERCO. And we're collaborating on something we call Experience PDX. I have to find the button, don't I?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Down or space? Down or space? Nope.
Got it?
I got it?
Perfect. Good.
That's not it. Alan, you've got to help me.
Here comes Kealan. She'll come to the rest.
I just need the one that looks like this. Green. There you go. So should I just push that, which one? Push there. Oh. Then where? Okay, great. Thank you. So Experience PDX is a model that's built upon a long-term program that we've had at Metropolitan Family Service called Experience Core. 1995, it started with the Secretary of State saying that we should unite older and younger people for the benefit of both populations and also for the benefit of the whole community. And it's been a long time since 1995, when Portland was one of those five pilot sites that started Experience Core. But I'm reminded that, at that time, we had a local leader in Grandma Cherry Hendricks from North Portland, who was an educator in Woodlawn Elementary. And she really inspired the way that we at MFS have crafted Experience Core locally, which is to focus on the mentoring as well as the academics and to build on natural community connection. The aspect that we wanted to really hone in on with the opportunity of age-friendly was to expand intergenerational connections across cultures. And our idea was to further youth success through the mentoring model that we were using, that basically brings groups of elders not that old, 50-plus, into high-need schools to help them with particularly literacy, but also confidence about learning, interest in learning, and general development, as well as help them access needs. Many of the kids that we're serving have very little, and we often find that our mentors are discovering that children are hungry or lack clothing, and they're helping with those essential needs as well. And as we think about the model and start to question, what does our community need today? We knew that we had this evidence-based model for literacy, because the elders are reading with the kids, and we're getting the results, those third-grade reading benchmarks that we all are striving for. And we know that the model was evidence-based for older adult health and wellness. So those were all proven by national and also by local evaluations. But what we felt we needed to do was to build on the cultural responsiveness of the model as Alan shows us, who we are today. So I'm going to take a minute to talk about that very briefly and have Koi share a little bit about our partnership. For those of you that are numbers-oriented, what we're talking about with this particular investment from the city was basically four sites, 21 hours of mentor training that was collaborative with ERCO. We reached 72 children through one-on-one mentoring and offered classroom support to 768 kids, and a lot of individual and group and classroom academic support and mentoring. This is part of Experience Core. We actually serve 2,000 children in the overall metro region. All of the mentors, all 52 mentors benefited from ERCO's consultation and training. We basically found that after working with ERCO, who we asked to help us connect with the elders from their communities, we wanted to find out if there was a way for us to adapt the model, which we were not able to do with the national model, because the national model has prescriptive requirements such as dosage and how we deliver it. How could we adapt the model to speak to the refugee and immigrant elder vision about what that connection should look like from an intergenerational perspective? So ERCO came in and did training about this, but they also asked their elders, "What would you do if you were working with children?" And their response to us was, "We would not read to them. We would do oral storytelling. We would come to family night, and we might read stories there. We might teach some songs, but we certainly aren't going to volunteer." That just doesn't make any sense. If the kids need help, tell us what they need, and we'll be there. And that's a total shift from the model mindset that we had from 1995. So that's the challenge that we were trying to harness through this experiment in the last two years, which I think, as Alan says, is still needing more work, but has stepped forward in some leaps and bounds, as evidenced by these results. So you see that the students are improving in reading, they're improving in their confidence, and 97% of the mentors indicated improved health and well-being. The growing partnerships with culturally-specific organizations has now fanned out ERCO's our partner for this, but because of our work with three other culturally-specific organizations, they're now helping us figure out how to make inroads into those groups as well. So SEI, ANEA, and Latino Network have been working with us to think about how do we reach their communities in new ways with this intergenerational approach. Three quick things that it came out of the qualitative study we did: major shift on the part of the mentors, who are primarily majoritized white culture, although we do have some elders from a variety of different cultural backgrounds, and that is growing. We saw an awareness of inequity shift. We saw an effort to understand and ability to understand the context with which the children were coming to school before. Sometimes, I think we heard, "We don't understand why they don't have clothing or why they aren't coming to school on time." Now we hear, "Oh, I understand what's going on at home and in the community." We also saw a shift in a sense of the abilities of the mentors to meet the needs of the kids, which I think is very vital to the success of this work. I want to give a minute to Koi to share a little bit about her perspective.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I am Koi Vu. I'm the Director of Asian Family Center with the Immigrant Refugee Community Organization, also known as ERCO. We're a nonprofit social service organization that is led and is for the immigrant and refugee communities of Multnomah County and Oregon, with direct services such as housing, employment services, senior services, educational enrichment programs, many of which are supported and funded by the city. So we continue to appreciate the city's support. I consider myself a 1.5-generation refugee. For those of us who are unfamiliar with that term, some of us call ourselves a first-generation refugee. But for those of us who identify as 1.5, we were not born in the United States, but grew up here and was raised here in the United States. I've been in Portland for almost 38 years now. And we are oftentimes called the Bridger Generation, where we are living in dual identities, with the old tradition, speaking our mother's tongue, as well as Americans as can be, like anyone else in this room, with Western values and ways of living. That's how I also feel ERCO has contributed and played a role in our communities. We are oftentimes the Bridgers within our communities, with our diverse communities that we serve, but also with the organizations that we partner with and within generations within our communities as well. And for those of us who no longer live in our homelands, our generations, our immigrant and refugee generations, only go as far back as federal immigration policies allow. So what that means is our grandparents sometimes are not here with us, our biological grandparents are not here with us. We have grandparents that we call grandpa and mama, but they're not biological grandparents. And so sometimes, these coordinated experience and community events are the only experiences that our youth actually have with their elder generations. As Judy mentioned before, what perhaps works for mainstream communities, it may not always effectively work for newer generations of immigrants and refugees, whether it's because it's a lack of transportation or lack of mobility, or being uncomfortable navigating spaces like a school system or a school. It's oftentimes not the most appropriate way for our elders to come and serve and support our communities and our youth themselves. What they would prefer, as what we have done in multiple generations in the past, is to pass down those stories through oral history, through oral storytelling. What I heard, I went to the Women's March just about a week and a half ago, and a Native American elder there spoke about how our elders are wisdom keepers, and they hold our histories and our traditions, and that's the same way with our communities of color. That is the same way with our elders community in API, African immigrant, Slavi communities. Storytelling offers many benefits. We talk about the cultural benefits or the historical and social benefits of it, but for children itself, it allows them to explore their own cultural identity. It increases their sense of identity and sense of belonging, which some of us may not have if we grew up here in the United States, in connection to our rooted communities, and then offer insights to universal life experiences. I can't give you a list of other reasons why storytelling is important culturally to us, but it also provides us as an academic tool. It enhances listening skills, encourages active participation, increase verbal proficiency, and then use of imagination and creativity, all what we know is important in holistic learning experience of a student. For our elders, who are oftentimes newer to the country, it also increases socialization, decreases isolation, and gives them a sense of purpose, which sometimes may not exist as well in this new country that they're still trying to learn to adapt and integrate to. So, you know, one of the things that I think Judy and I want to continue to express to our community partners and those of us in the room and to you all here today, is a collaboration. This collaboration brings light to us that there is no one way of doing things, especially when we're talking about diverse communities. Each of our communities are experts to our own experiences and our own learning, and if we listen and allow ourselves to adapt, we together are able to not only be creative and do something special, but also effectively and responsibly and respectfully serve our community as well.
Thank you.
We thank you for your investment.
Appreciate it, both of you. Thank you.
And I'm wondering if there's any questions specifically for MFS, and we'll keep moving through at this point. Okay, so we're in a very tight schedule. Sounds good. So I'd like to invite up Ruby Hotten-Pitts from Age Friendly, sorry, AARP Oregon, Shayna Pittman-Frank from Elders in Action, Kathy Moide and Leroy Patner, community volunteers. Our volunteers are only going to very briefly introduce themselves, just to keep things moving along, but I would like to say that they've submitted testimony for the record.
Thanks, Alan, and I look forward to speaking at the Generations United Conference. That's going to be great. Thanks for plugging. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I also want to say thank you to the Gray Panthers and to Elders in Action for being in the room, and I want to pay them respect as well. It's a pleasure to be here today. It's a pleasure to be home. Thank you. My name is Ruby Hotten-Pitts, and I'm the new director, statewide director of AARP Oregon. I've been away for a little while, but I'm glad to be back. AARP is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, social change organization with a nationwide membership of nearly 38 million individuals, and 65,000 of us are right here in Portland. We work to improve quality of life for all people of all ages, helping to strengthen communities and fighting for the issues that matter most to Oregon families. An important aspect of our work in Oregon is advocating for livable and age-friendly communities. We have been a proud partner of Portland's age-friendly effort since the beginning, even before you were involved in the global and national age-friendly network of communities. And as usual, Oregon was a frontrunner, so thank you for that. AARP's network of age-friendly communities consists of villages, towns, counties, cities, and even states throughout our great nation. Where and how we live as we age is critical to our well-being, and you might say that after 13 years of being away, that's why I'm back. I want to share with you real quick, in story form, because that's the way I do it, just some of the aspects of an age-friendly community, and some of those that actually are a part of each one of our histories, no matter how old we are. We all maybe grew up where there were some outdoor spaces and outdoor buildings, recreational facilities that were safe. We also had transportation where we lived, whether it was mom and dad driving us or riding bicycles or something in that realm of public transportation. There was also housing. We had housing in our neighborhoods where across the street the granny lived, or maybe upstairs is where my grandparents lived. But there was a range of housing in our neighborhood that was actually of value, and it was of value not because of how much it cost, but because of the people who dwelled inside. We also had social participation, like we have here today, up and down. And people did it in different ways, but now we're beginning to look at new ways of doing it. We had respect for social inclusion in our communities, and today, we're trying to do that again. We also had civic participation, so there was employment and there was opportunity for volunteerism. And then there was communication. Back then, people read the newspaper, they watched the 6 o'clock news, and somewhere around 11 or midnight, your folks said, "You ought to be home because the TV went blank and there was fuzz." Now, what we want is accessible technology for people as they age, and we want it everywhere so that they don't become disconnected. And lastly, we wanted community support and health services, because you know the doctor used to live down the street from us, and he was kind of wealthy, and we weren't. But he was in the neighborhood, and so was his office. And we want those things to be around us now as we age. What I just ran through here were the eight domains of a livable community. And certainly, we are all looking for places and spaces where we can live, work, and play as we age. Now, we have to be more deliberate in that attempt, and that's where AARP comes in, because we want to collaborate with you and anyone else who wants to make a community livable. At AARP, we believe that when a community considers the diverse needs of all of its people, every last one of us, zero to 100-plus, no matter what we look like, no matter who we love, and no matter what we think, we just want to stand with you and push forward to make our communities here throughout the state more livable. Thank you for your time today. It is It is my pleasure to be home.
We're glad to have you. Thanks for being here. Commissioner Hardisty.
I just wanted to publicly welcome Ruby back home. Both of
Our last names have changed a bit in the time that you've been gone, but what, how wonderful, thank you so much for being here. It's great to see you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Shayna Pittman-Frank with Elders in Action, and I'm also the program manager for the Age Friendly and Age Smart Employer Business Awards. Elders in Action envisions an equitable society in which older adults are civically engaged, deeply woven into the fabric of our communities, and recognized for their inherent value. A voice for older adults in the Portland metro area, we recognize that the entire experience of getting older has changed. People live longer, work longer, and remain active and engaged citizens longer than ever before. This past October, we were thrilled to collaborate with Venture Portland, our age-friendly partners, and the city, in the inaugural Age Friendly Business Awards. And thanks to Commissioner Fish and Mayor Wheeler for being there. This innovative awards program recognizes Portland businesses that lead the way in serving older adults, and those that build thriving multi-generational workplaces. With over 25 award applicants and winners such as New Seasons Market, Unitedis Community Credit Union, and Urban Development Partners, we showcased best practices and harnessed the desire of businesses to contribute to a thriving and equitable Portland. As a result of this program, businesses made new connections and learned about programs that elevate the work that they do. For example, Unitedis Community Credit Union learned about Multnomah County's Guardians Program, Public Guardians Program, and held trainings for their managers on the critical role the financial community can play in identifying fraud, abuse, or neglect of older adults. The city's commitment to age-friendly work has helped build bridges between Portland's economic development and the growth of a community where all ages can thrive. As our community strives to be an equitable place for all to live and work, age cannot be overlooked as an element of experience that causes people to be marginalized. For those already on the margins of programs and services, getting older adds a new layers, a new layer of barriers and exclusion. Elders in Action and Age Friendly Portland Partners are committed to ensuring age is not a barrier to living well in Portland. Economic concerns, finding work past the age of 50, having flexible work opportunities, being able to retire, are of critical importance to older adults. While some employers recognize the importance of retaining an older workforce, many still do not. What it means to be in age-friendly Portland will evolve as our population grows older and our spaces and our programs change. Portland's work thus far has been a model for other cities, and since the awards in October, leaders from across the country have sought to learn more about the work we are doing here. We are all clearly doing something right. Elders in Action is honored to be a proponent of this work and is grateful for the city's commitment to ensuring older adults remain a valued, engaged part of our community. We urge you to continue this support, and we are enthusiastic about the city's consideration of an age-friendly position within the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. We look forward to working with the city in 2019, and I hope you'll save the date for the next Portland Age Friendly Business Awards on October 30th here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Moide. I'm 74 years old, so I'm definitely a senior. I moved to Portland a few years ago after having served as a system engineer for 36 years at the Jet Propulsion Laboratory in Pasadena, California. Two years ago, I moved into a downtown apartment, and I've been extremely pleased with how easily I've been able to make a life for myself, even though I didn't know anybody. I've gotten involved in volunteer activities like Elders in Action, and I'm an AARP tax aide, and I take advantage of being halfway between the Schnitzer and Powell's to go to book signings and lectures. I've gotten involved in some movie groups and book groups, and between the MAXes, the, you know, the public transit, the compact nature, so I can walk to a lot of things, and meeting a few people who live downtown. I no longer have a car, and I'm finding myself perfectly able to participate in pretty much everything I want. So I'd like to encourage you to consider downtown Portland as a community for seniors in addition to the concerns about the people living in outside areas by themselves and in retirement communities.
Absolutely, thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Leroy Patton, co-founder and, co-founder of the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, which is a statewide organization that addresses discrimination in housing. I'm also a member of the Governor's Commission on Senior Services for the State of Oregon, and I've been a member of the age-friendly organization since its inception in 2013. Without going through all the things that you've heard before about age-friendly communities, I'd just like to say that an age-friendly community is one in which older adults are respected, their knowledge, skills, and resources, and contributions are looked, looked forward to, and they are integrated into the fabric of the community. Recognizing that our population is aging and public resources are limited, the economic, social, and personal benefits to be gained make clear the wisdom of taking action to create communities that are more age-friendly. I'm just here to encourage you to continue to support and guide the age-friendly effort, and ask you to support them in any way you can.
Thank you, Leroy. Commissioner Hardisty.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, thank you for your years of community service. You are certainly an icon, and I'm so thrilled to be able to say that from here. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
I made you blush.
So that's what we've got for you.
Very good, that's excellent. Colleagues, any comments, questions, or I'll entertain a motion?
Move the report, second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Udaley, we have a second from Commissioner Fritz. Any further discussion? I'll reserve my comments for my vote, please call the roll. Fritz?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Fish, for putting on this report on the council agenda. Thank you to everybody who's here, and I echo Commissioner Hardisty's lauding of all of your work, and thank you for being great partners with the city over many years now. And this is, to me, is an example of how the commission form of government can work really well, that I was able to pass the initial resolution, and then Commissioner Fish has absolutely taken it and run with it. So it's fun to see what you, and satisfying to see what you're doing. Thank you to all of the community partners. We do need to continue to work on it happily, since the majority of council is over 60, you're kind of preaching to the choir here. And we're certainly in partnership with people working, people with disabilities of all different kinds in the community, looking at how can we become an all-abilities friendly community, and certainly aging is part of that. So thank you so much for your work, thank you for being here, and again, thank you, Commissioner Fish, for a really inspirational presentation. Aye.
Fish?
Well, I too would like to thank all of our special guests this morning. Alan, thank you for really organizing the presentation. Ruby and all of our, our friends, thank you for taking time this morning to present. I love these early morning council presentations on uplifting things, because they, they hopefully set a tone for the rest of our day. But as Commissioner Fritz said, growing older is something that many of us are experiencing, and I'm, I'm experiencing it personally. I'm now 60 years old and a proud card-carrying member of the AARP, and recently put together a trip to Los Angeles with my daughter, and was taking advantage of all the great discounts, so I very appreciate it. Because of your collective efforts, Portland continues to be a leader in planning and developing a community that is welcoming to people of all ages and abilities. And I am, just speaking as one member of the council, pleased to see that there is a proposal for an age-friendly position in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability's proposed budget. I think that's something that is worthy of us debating and hopefully taking up. It's been one of my priorities to have such a position, and it will help to expand our collective good work. I want to thank all the individuals who serve on our Age Friendly Portland Advisory Council, and I think we actually have a number of people here today that did not participate in the panel, but are very active. Could you raise your hand, Jay Blum and others, if you're here, but you didn't actually testify, just so we can acknowledge and thank you for being here? Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I, I got my start in this work many, many years ago, before I had the honor of being elected to the council, when then-county Chair Ted Wheeler put together a task force on vital aging, and Jay Blum staffed the task force, produced an excellent report. One of the things that I took away from that is that there were cities across the country that were seeing the graying of their population as somehow a burden, that somehow it was going to end up taxing their ability to provide services and other things. Portland was one of the first cities to view it as a great asset. The social capital that comes from having older adults that have life experience, the fact that older adults want to live downtown, want to access arts and culture, want to contribute and volunteer in so many ways, you're a classic example. And so in Portland, we see the aging process as not, not just inevitable, but as a great asset to the fabric of our community, and I think your presentation makes that eminently clear today. I want to thank Asena Lawrence on my team, who is the person on my staff who does coordination with Age Friendly Portland, and I'm just proud to be on a council that has, that has worked hard on these issues for many, many years, and continues to support the good work that you're doing in the community. So big thank you, and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Hardisty?
I just want to say that the work that you're doing is vital. As our population ages and lives longer, all across the board, it is absolutely important that we maintain that community fiber, that that community vibrants, and I love the, I love being a community elder, I got to tell you. There's a lot of power that comes with being a community elder, right? Because you don't actually have to wait for permission, you just do what you need to do. And, and I hope that all Oregonians, especially those who live in the Portland metro area, have that opportunity. I live in East Portland, where those opportunities are not as broad for seniors. Transportation is a big issue, infrastructure is a big issue, having access to the arts and to music is all a big issue. So I applaud the work that you're doing, but I hope we don't end it downtown, because we have some fabulous seniors in every corner of this city who absolutely need to have access to build community and to make, to know that they are valued, and that they continue to contribute to our community. So I'm also very happy to vote aye.
Udaley?
Well, it's two months shy of my 49th birthday, I guess I'm the youngster on the council.
Oh, baby.
But with the recent passing of my great uncle, who was the last elder in that generation, I have now advanced one step closer to elderhood, I suppose. Thank you for the report, thank you all for being here. Mr. Patton, it's an honor to have you here, and I hope that I can continue to affirmatively advance the fair housing rule. Maybe you could come back in April for a little something we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess I'll just say, you know, if we think of the average person as the norm, or the majority, we're really failing to develop policy that's going to serve our whole community. What we should be doing is addressing the needs of people at extreme ends of the spectrums, which would be perhaps young children, our elders, people with disabilities, and the middle will take care of itself. So I'm really excited to work with all of you, excited about the possibility of this position, especially if we're going to be talking about universal design principles that will help not just elders, but anyone with access challenges in the community. And, yeah, that's it. I vote aye.
Wheeler?
Well, this has been a fantastic presentation. Commissioner Fish, thank you for bringing this forward, and Asena Lawrence, your policy director, I know worked very hard to put together what I think was a fantastic panel presentation, so thank you for that. Slight non sequitur, you've all been reading about this scandal that's unfolding around college admissions, and it's really hit a nerve with people in this country. And the larger narrative is it's causing us to reassess our values around privilege, around hyper-competitiveness, around what it means to support young people as they seek to gain footing in the world. And I believe on a whole host of fronts, including related to aging, we are reassessing some of our cultural assumptions about aging. And what I love about this presentation is really twofold. Number one, I just learned that I'm part of the youth movement on the city council. So I cannot wait to tell Katrina that. Number two, aging is a strength. It is a strength, and it is also the only thing that binds us all together, every one of us, without exception. We are all aging, and we will all become, God willing, older adults. And with age, as has been said for thousands of years, comes wisdom. Aristotle said it way back when, it is still true today. So there is that wisdom, there is that knowledge, there is that lived experience. Yes, there are the battle scars, there are the trials, the tribulations, the great losses, the great sadness, the great joy, and sharing that experience with younger people in our community is extremely valuable, and it's also an imperative. And by making aging something vile, something bad, something to be fought against, we have actually removed from our society and our spectrum, our arch of values, this notion that in the absence of older adults interacting with supporting and bringing up the next generations, we have actually disconnected from something profound and something critical to the development of our own culture, in my view. And this idea of an age-friendly community is one that is extremely important to all of us. You know, another sort of aside, I got invited to a birthday party this week, and I couldn't say no. I'm going to a hundred, 100th birthday party over at the Providence Elder Place for a resident of Portland, she's a lifelong resident of Portland, she's contributed to this community therefore, for 100 years, since basically the end of the First World War. And I was honored to be asked, I was honored to be included in that experience, and I just want to thank all of you for the, the leadership you're providing in reconnecting our generations, and in so doing, connecting us back to a value that we used to hold dear.
Right.
At a time when we revered our elders and we valued aging, and we got to get back to it. And it's never been more obvious to me than it is right now. So thank you for all of that, I look forward to continuing to engage in the work with all of you. Commissioner Fish, thank you for being such a fantastic advocate for our age-friendly initiatives here at the city of Portland. I vote aye, the report's accepted. Thank you. Carla, could you please read the next Time Serpent item, item number 221?
Declare intent to initiate local improvement district formation proceedings to construct street, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements from East Burnside Street to south of northeast Everett Court in the northeast 97th Avenue Phase 2 Local Improvement District.
Commissioner Udaley?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to bring forward this first step in the lengthy process of considering a large local improvement district in the Gateway Area. PBO LID Administrator Andrew Abbey will get into the details shortly, and it is an impressive effort in an area long in need of investment, but I want to highlight a couple issues and concerns I have at the front end. And I'll keep it real brief, I have two concerns. One is displacement. City Council adopted a variety of anti-displacement measures with our comp plan in recognition to historic wrongs and negative impacts for communities of color and low-income renters, and I want to make sure that we are bringing all of those measures to bear when we are considering this project. And the second is the potential for affordable housing. Currently, the the proposal suggests that we could get up to 2,000 units, and 40% of them would be available at some level of affordability. But that's not a promise or a guarantee. It's a possibility. And given the city's investment in this area, I want to not lose sight of the potential, especially given the fact we've got a light rail stop there. And it would be just a prime area for affordable workforce housing. So, with that, I want to invite Andrew to begin his presentation, and then we can open it up to invited testimony, followed by public testimony. Hello.
Thank you, Commissioner Yu Daly. Andrew Abbey, Local Improvement District Administrator. It's a distinct pleasure to be here this morning. It was almost five years ago to this day that council closed out the first LID that we had in Gateway, which is the northeast 97th Avenue Green Street LID, which is why we're calling this the northeast 97th Avenue Phase Two LID. And one of the developments that arose as a result of that LID was the Rose Apartments, which is 40% affordable housing. And that has been an unqualified success in Gateway, a rare success story in Gateway. And I've been talking to the property owners since then, and there's a waiting list for that affordable housing. So, one of the catalysts for this new LID was to help address that waiting list for affordable housing. So, with that, why don't we switch over to the presentation, and I'll kind of walk you through that in a little bit more detail. So, the map that you see here on this slide, there's actually two maps there. They're the same map, but what they highlight are the two different LIDs that we are planning to bring to council. The one on the left is the LID we're considering today, which is the northeast 97th Avenue Phase Two LID, which would complete all of the street improvements on northeast 97th Avenue from Burnside to Gleason. And then on the right, you see the new east-west streets that we propose to build in Gateway. So, right now, what you have in Gateway are superblocks. So, you have, you're hemmed in by I-205 on the west. You've got Burnside and Gleason, which are arterials running east and west. And then you've got 102nd Avenue. There's little to no on-street parking on either one of those three arterials. So, in essence, what Gateway is, is it's an area that you can drive through, but it's not an area that the street network really lets you stop anywhere. We just have very inadequate access and circulation into Gateway. So, what we want to accomplish between these two LIDs and actually a third and fourth LID, which I can explain in a moment, is we really want to break up that superblock that I just showed you on those maps. We do want to build 1,500 to 2,000 new housing units. Again, 40% of those affordable. The Gateway urban renewal area is going to expire in three years. And kind of at the 11th hour, we'd like to get a big win for Gateway before the URA expires. Commissioner Yu Daly mentioned that we have three MAX lines nearby. And earlier this year, Trimed implemented a new 24-hour bus line on Burnside Street. So, we really want to capitalize on the investment that Trimed has made in this area. We want to improve pedestrian and bike safety at the light rail crossing at 97th and Burnside. We want to encourage more bike ridership in this area. Right now, the I-205 multi-use path between Burnside and Gleason has been described as a quote "cattle chute," unquote. We want to improve the drainage and lighting on that multi-use path so that it's a more attractive facility for, to be used. And we also want to address equity concerns. So, this particular area in Gateway has an equity score of 10. It's the maximum possible equity score that we can have. We have a very diverse community here. We really want to build infrastructure to serve this community. So, I just, I wanted to put this into perspective that, as we all know, we have a real shortage of housing in Portland. If you were to take the area that you saw on the maps two slides ago, if you were to take that area and make it the 37th county in Oregon, what we're poised to do here in the way of additional housing units is to deliver more housing units than currently exist in three individual counties. Sherman-Gilliam and Wheeler County is shown on that map. So, we're really talking about something transformational. And while those counties are small in population, they have been outsized in terms of their contributions to Oregon. So, Wheeler County, for example, is where Bill Bowerman, the founder of Nike, and the gentleman who invented the waffle sole for Nike shoes, that's where he grew up. Gilliam County is where Linus Pauling grew up, the famous scientist. Interesting story, you may not know, but Linus Pauling had to move out of Portland in 1905 because his father died and his mother couldn't afford housing in Portland. So, the reason he moved to Gilliam County is because he couldn't afford to live in Portland. So, bottom line is, these are wonderful counties to live in, but what we don't want to have happen is people have to move far away from Portland because they can't afford a place to live in Portland. So...
So, this is not a new problem, is the point.
I have said many times, we've always had a housing crisis for someone, but I didn't realize it was included Linus Pauling. So, thank you.
And full disclosure, Mayor, I did a little research on you, and I see you have no connection to Wheeler County.
None whatsoever. Thank you for the disclosure.
So, here's the financial overview of this particular LID. It's a $5.6 million LID. And we have a very generous contribution from Trimed to improve rail safety at 97th and Burnside on this LID. This comes on the heels of the recently formed LID in Cully. So, we really appreciate Trimed partnering with us so soon after the most recent LID. So, if we are successful, we're still tying up the loose ends on the second LID that we want to bring to council for Cooch and Davis Streets, as I showed you on the map. If council winds up forming this LID and the Cooch-Davis LID, the combined effect of those two LIDs, this will become the largest LID, combined LID in the city's history, and it will surpass a number of LIDs that council has approved over the past few years. So, this is a picture of what 97th and Burnside looks like. It's not a very attractive environment. You can, you can see that the drainage is poor, and the bikes come down southbound on 97th Avenue. They have a kind of a strange angle crossing there where the MAX train is. We want to improve the safety of that moving forward. Trimed is going to have a track refurbishment project in this area. And so, we saw this as an opportunity to improve that safety in conjunction with that upgrade. So, on the top left, you see a picture of what the Gateway Shopping Center looked like in 1954. And I think council knows that I'm a bit of a history buff. So, I looked and found out that Fred Peterson was the 43rd mayor of Portland when the Gateway Shopping Center was built. We are blessed today with the presence of the 52nd and 53rd mayors of the City of Portland, who are with us today, Charlie Hales and Ted Wheeler.
Wait, where's Mayor Hales? There he is. Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Hales is in the chamber. Thank you. Thanks for being here, Mayor.
So, here we are, nine and 10 year, 10 mayors later. I think we're finally poised to solve the Gateway puzzle. But what you can see is that the shopping center has been in existence for 65 years, but you go a little bit south of the shopping center, and we still have really derelict infrastructure. You may be surprised to learn, looking at those pictures, that those pictures are an area that's been designated as a pedestrian district, and it's anything but pedestrian-friendly. As a matter of fact, the Hazelwood Neighborhood Association in which this LID is located actually has a lower sidewalk coverage ratio than the city as a whole, despite being a designated pedestrian district. So, this is another picture, and I just want to bring this up to address the displacement issue. We have a lot of lots here in this area that are vacant. We also have houses that are just simply boarded up. We're not going to displace anybody if we tear down a house that's boarded up. What I've been hearing anecdotally is some of the people who live there have been moving out because the conditions are so unattractive. I wanted to just show you the title of 33 Gateway Plan District. It says that Gateway is Portland's only regional center. It is designated in the Outer Southeast Community Plan. It is targeted to receive a significant share of the city's growth. Gateway is served by two interstate freeways, MAX Light Rail, and Trimed Bus Service. Gateway is positioned to become the most intensely-developed area outside of the central city. But looking at these pictures, that development and all the housing that we want to bring will not happen without first building the infrastructure to bring it. So, I was talking last week with a former colleague of mine at Trimed. I used to work there many years ago. And we were having a conversation about what's been successful with light rail and what hasn't. And he made the comment to me that if, if you're to look at the major MAX lines in the system, the one station that's done well is Orenco and Hillsborough. What hasn't done so well is Sunset Transit Center and Gateway Transit Center, because there's no active space around them. So, that kind of intrigued me. So, last Saturday, I had a little bit of time to kill, and I rode the MAX out to Gateway, and I just kind of wanted to see what it looked like from a pedestrian's point of view. So, I got off the red line at Gateway. I crossed this crosswalk. I was greeted by three abandoned shopping carts and a barbed wire fence. And then, when I walked around that wire fence, I was standing in a surface parking lot, looking at the back of a Fred Meyer store. So, I mean, there's nothing there to draw you there. That is not an active space. There wasn't a single car parked on that parking lot. So, then what I did is a little later that afternoon, I took my daughter out to Orenco. We took a long MAX ride out to Orenco and Hillsborough, and I wanted to see what Orenco was looking like. And I'm not suggesting that we build exactly in Gateway what we built in Orenco, but what you've got there in Orenco is you've got mixed use right up against the MAX line. You have shops, restaurants. You have a range of housing options in Orenco, and again, including affordable housing. There was a strong partnership between the City of Hillsborough, Trimed, and Affordable Housing Partners. You have a real community there in Hillsborough. And what I really want to show you here is that what we're proposing is this initial area in Gateway is what we show on the map, is the initial development shaded in green. We are hoping that this will kickstart at some point the future development area shaded in purple. It's about a one-third mile walk from the Gateway Transit Center down to the area of the proposed LIDs. Again, if you jump back to the Orenco slide, the initial Orenco Station development is also a third of a mile away from the MAX line. And then that gave rise to the development of what you see in those pictures many years later.
Andrew, could you just go back two slides, please?
Yeah.
On that one. I just wanted to point out to everybody there, underneath where it says Northeast Widler Street, that's Halsey Street. And right under there is the new Gateway Discovery Park. So, that also is going to provide a huge amenity for this future development, and I'm really excited to see.
Thank you, Commissioner. I couldn't have said it better. So, what we really want to do is we've got the investments coming at the north end of Gateway. The feedback I've been hearing from the community is we need a downtown-type development to link together Gateway with Mall 205, and we need to make that connection as well.
Right. And that, just, I just want to also add that there's a Human Solutions Building that's going up there with affordable housing. So, I know that this community has been really intentional about the concern that Commissioner Yu Daly and I share. And so, thank you for addressing head-on the displacement issue.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Commissioner Hardesty?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. The initial development spot that you have located on the map, is your development, who owns that property, and is that development already approved?
Good question. You're going to be hearing from those folks in just a few minutes, Commissioner Hardesty. I think part of the reason we're here today, Commissioner, is what you had in Hillsborough many years ago, is the City of Hillsborough went in and started assembling all those parcels where you had a concentration of ownership. That has been sorely lacking in Gateway. But what we've had is we've had some passionate residents and developers of Gateway who have wanted to transform their community into something better. And what they've been doing the past five and 10 years have been assembling those parcels themselves to put us in a position where now we have a concentration of ownership, where we can now move ahead and do this development.
What we've learned from other transit centers is that if we don't, if we don't, if we're not proactive about having housing that people can afford to live in first, before the development happens, then what happens is we displace the people who are there now.
Correct. And what I'm, what, we've been very intentional, Commissioner, in our discussions with the developers about incorporating affordable housing. I'm not, I don't work for the Housing Bureau, but I'm obviously well aware of the need for affordable housing. So, that has been front and center in our discussions all the way through.
So, when you say affordable housing, what do you mean?
Again, I'm not a housing expert, but whatever the definition of affordable housing, the intent here is that 40% of the units that are built will be affordable.
It will probably be 60 to 80% MFI, which is basically...
The median family income. So, we're talking 45, 40 to 45,000 would be what somebody would have to make to live in those apartments. I mean, I think it's important that we actually say the number as compared to using the term affordable housing, because that's such an oxymoron statement, right? Because I can't tell you what's affordable for you, and you certainly can't tell me what's affordable for me. But we need to know, what is the income you need to live there? Thank you.
I take your charge on that, Commissioner. Thank you. But again, I just want to emphasize affordable housing in no way, shape, or form has been an afterthought to this discussion. So, so, you saw the pictures of what this area of Gateway looks like today. This is an architectural rendering of what we would like Gateway to become. So, this particular photo, I shouldn't say photo, architectural rendition is standing south of Burnside Street, looking north or east of I-205, this, this is what we want to have happening in Gateway. So, I can't stress this enough, but when we're talking about market rate housing and affordable housing, when we're putting 1,500 to 2,000 housing units in here, that creates a lot more housing options for everyone. And then, my last slide here is the other corner of this area of Gateway. This is at 99th and Everett Court. What we also hope to do is have a third and fourth LID. The third LID would build northeast Everett Court, which is the required component of achieving the 1,500 to 2,000 housing units. We also would like to do something pretty innovative, which we'd like to do a second LID in the city's history to help fund park improvements. We'd like to build one park along the west side of northeast 97th Avenue, and also build a park in the vicinity of 99th and Everett Court, so that we're not only building housing options for people, but we're also building recreational spaces for people. If you're going to have enough people moving here that it could become the 37th largest county in Oregon, we need to have green space and open space for those people of all income levels and backgrounds to have a place to recreate. So...
Is that, is it envisioned that those park improvements would be parts of the developments and paid for as part of the development?
Yeah, those are the discussions that are unfolding. They're pretty early discussions, but the idea is, is that the development coming in the door would also partner with the city on funding those park improvements.
I know you're going to have more presenters, but the question that occurs to me right now is, why is this coming as a, and local improvement district, which you usually think about as streets, where in fact it's an area plan, a development plan?
Well, again, we have more details to work out on this, but really, my intent here is just to inform the council that we're trying to think of this comprehensively so that we don't build part of the infrastructure and not think about the other aspects of the infrastructure. And in fact, what we're really trying to do here, Commissioner, and I haven't done this effort, you'll hear more from former Mayor Hales, he's been doing a massing study of this area. We've been trying to do our own little mini-master plan, if you will, to see how all these components fit together. So, it's a work in progress.
And is Prosper Portland involved?
Yes. And thank you very much. That's a great segue into my final comment, which was, I wanted to thank Thea Munchell at Prosper Portland. She is relatively new to Portland and to Prosper, and she has done an excellent job of engaging with us. The discussions are still early, but those discussions are proceeding well. And there's a lot of moving pieces to this. We've got transportation involved. We've got parks. We've got Prosper Portland. But as far as I can tell, all the discussions seem to be going well and aligning. So, I hope council approves this. And I hope we can also hopefully bring back second, third, and fourth LIDs to you in the coming months to fully realize their vision in Gateway. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Andrew, could I, could I just put a couple of comments on, on the table? First of all, to be very clear for the benefit of the council, we are here to talk about the LID. That is what we are talking about today. But I appreciate that we're also dovetailing that with a larger vision for what this neighborhood could be. And yes, Prosper Portland is engaged. And responsive to Commissioner Hardesty's question, the Housing Bureau is also engaged in what I would describe as very preliminary conversations. So, the answer to your question about what constitutes affordable, that has not been determined at this point. The second piece I'd like to, to mention is that the development vision that you are showing here is actually a long-term development vision. This is not something that is imminently coming before the council for a vote or approval, but this is an effort by advocates in the Gateway area to show what a potential vision for this area could be like. They've already assembled the land. They've already thought long and hard about what the open space, what the green space, what the park-like opportunities would be. And they've engaged proactively with us on the housing and the development front to talk about how that development might unfold. But there's a lot of runway that happens between... But there's a lot of runway that happens between here and there before anything is finalized in that regard. So I, I want to bracket this a little bit and say what's before us today is really just the LID question. But it is also nice, and frankly, I appreciate hearing the bigger vision so I can connect the dots between now and say 20 years from now, what the completed picture will actually look like. So I appreciate that. But I, I wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I mean, the, just to be even a little more clear, the resolution today is simply to declare our intent to initiate a local improvement district formation. So we're not committing to specifics. We are just getting a picture of what's possible if we were to invest in these improvements in partnership with private entities.
Yeah, and I, the only thing I would add to that, Mayor, is what we're really trying to do is to avoid greenlighting a whole bunch of housing and then the infrastructure being an afterthought later, you know, where we take a waiver of remonstrance and we're here five or 10 years talking, you know, gee, we should have planned this all out and had the infrastructure. We're just trying to have a more proactive, coordinated and planned approach.
Yeah, and I, and I just wanted to give a shout out to the people in the community who are bringing this vision forward, that they have actually sought to reach out to us both on the development threat through Prosper as well as thinking about displacement and affordability issues around the housing question. We're just a long way from actually making any final determination and none of that would go forward without bringing it back to the council for a full discussion.
I, oh, go ahead, Commissioner. Thank you. So is this, is the city putting any money into this local improvement district?
I'm sorry?
Is the city putting any money into the local?
Yeah, so if you go back to... Sorry, I didn't have these slides memorized. There you go. Yeah, we're, on this particular local improvement district, PBOT's putting a little over 5% into it. If we bring back the second LID, we are anticipating that we would bring that LID back with Prosper Portland funding if it's approved and then also with PBOT System Development Charge funding as well. One thing I really want to stress is it's, it's hard enough to make these developments pencil when you're only having to improve one street, which in this case is an existing 97th Avenue that's north-south, but then if you're also building an east-west street and you have to buy land and demolish buildings, fill, fill incest pools, build new east-west streets, extend water mains and do utility undergrounding, is, is a heavy lift for the infrastructure. And we, we're planning for that. We think we can pay for it. But that's why we need some public investment on the infrastructure side.
And by overhead funding, you mean non-system development charge funding?
What I mean by overhead funding is that is funding that's applied to the personnel on PBOT. So it's generally at the 80% rate on, on personnel charges in, in PBOT. And we've had a long tradition of using overhead funding to help, help move LIDs forward.
Okay, that, and so my, then my last question is, this is unusual, that usually, that often we have a developments agreement, going back to Commissioner Hardesty's question about who owns the properties, who's going to benefit. We don't have a development agreement on this yet?
Yeah, Commissioner, we traditionally haven't done development agreements on LIDs, but there are certainly deal points, if you will, on the funding. And so the funding of the second LID that we want, I mean, the first LID is fully funded, so that's not an issue. But if we think about bringing that second LID forward, we're looking at some markers in terms of number of certain blocks developing and at Commissioner Hardesty's point, ensuring that affordable housing is part of that component as well.
So what guarantee do we have even in the first phase of what's going to get built?
Because those guarantees would apply to the LID funding. And, you know, I think the important thing to remember, Commissioner, is LIDs are liens on properties. So for the many LIDs I've done over the years, having a lien on the property is a real incentive to develop. And we also have zoning in place, by the way, that has high-density zoning in this regional center, et cetera. So my experience over the LIDs, and I think the original LID in Gateway is a good example of that for Northeast 97th. You know, once you have that LID formed by council, it's really a commitment at that point that we're moving forward and you're going to, you're going to develop. So I just, I simply haven't seen the need for development agreements in the past because the development has materialized. But that said, there are these deal points that we need to continue working out and there will be the opportunity to do that with additional LIDs coming before council.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor. I greatly appreciate your presentation and I do understand that we're just talking about the LID today.
Yes.
But what you're doing is making a commitment. What you're doing is having property owners tax themselves...
Yes.
...to do improvements with an expectation that something else is going to happen. So even though we have a very narrow vote today, it's all in context, and by the way, that is my community.
Yes.
It is in context of how is this going to benefit the community both short-term and long-term? And so my question is, I appreciate the Mayor's clarification and Commissioner Udaley's clarification, but I'm always concerned, we're just saying approve this today and we'll deal with the details later, right? Because we're still working those out. Because as soon as you make that commitment, you're off and running, right? And then you'll be back with little other pieces. But I'm, I, just know that I'm concerned that we, we don't have a model yet of how we've done this right. So I would love to see this one be a model of how we've done it right. And that real affordable housing, a real housing that people can afford to live in is a result of the actions that were taken. And if we don't have a commitment around that, then I would have some concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner. And let me just say this, that we can include whatever we want to include in the formation ordinance for the subsequent LIDs. So if council wants to include a finding or a directive in there that says it's going to be affordable, you know, 40% affordable housing, you know, whatever, whatever issue is important to the council, we can absolutely embed those in a formation ordinance for subsequent LIDs.
I, I want to raise a cautionary flag on that. I do not support that strategy because that backs us into a financial model that we may or may not be able to afford and it may, it may create a market dynamic that that community just can't support.
Okay.
So I could be very reluctant to put that level of specificity in.
Okay.
Unless the housing director tells me otherwise, but I, I think she'll tell us it's a crazy idea.
Andrew, so, so can I just, you know, I think the, this is one of those rare examples of where we have, we had this set aside for 30 minutes today because it was the, it was, I guess from my briefing, supposed to be the least controversial part of the LID.
Mm-hmm.
But what you've done, however, is you've, you've laid out the vision. So in effect, what we're doing is commenting on the broader vision and where we make sure we get the public benefit. If we, if we weren't doing that, this would actually be a very straightforward LID.
We'd be done now.
And we'd be done by now. So I think that's where the disconnect is a little bit. One, one thing I'll just note from the briefing that I got, the developer doesn't actually control all the sites.
Yeah.
So before we put the, the cart before the horse here, you know, this is a long-term vision where people are attempting to assemble land and are thinking about financing, have preliminary conversations with the, with Prosper Portland about investment. I share the concern of my colleagues to make sure that we have clear guidelines in terms of what the public benefit is with public investment. To me, this, this particular LID is a no-brainer and you've, you've cooked it the way you do all, all other LIDs. And it's going to, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I plan to support it. But by giving us the, the sort of larger vision, you've salted in, in the conversation much bigger questions that we're not going to address today, but which we're signaling to the developer we may address in Phase Two and Three. And so it, it may not be a 30-minute LID conversation. It may be backing into sort of what does a master plan look like? What, what are the public benefits? And if Prosper Portland's putting money in this, what, what kind of guarantees are we getting?
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. And I want to be respectful of council's time. We have a few invited testimony, folks for invited testimony. I'm wondering if we could bring forward Steve Witter from Trimat and former Mayor Hales make a few brief remarks.
You bet. Thank you. Come on up. Mayor Hales, you know the drill.
Three minutes, name the record.
I recall it, Mayor Hales, I do. Good morning. I'm Charlie Hales with HDR. Mayor and Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here with you today. It's also a pleasure to be with Andrew Abbey, who's enabled the city to build so many streets and so many partnerships. And I know you're all familiar with the negotiation book Getting to Yes. I think Andrew actually could write the sequel, which would be Getting to Yes, Please Tax Me More. Because that's what he's enabling you to do, in this case and many others. I got involved in this project for two reasons. One, I have a long history with Gateway. And two, my company was hired to do some preliminary urban design and massing study diagrams, some of which you've seen here today, and to do some preliminary engineering calculations for the project. I'm also mainly here today because I think that this project and that the community that these property owners are interested in working with you to create is really finally the main chance to make something significant happen in Gateway and to fulfill the promise that we've all been harboring for this part of our city for a very long time. That promise will be realized, in my opinion, only if you form a long-term partnership with the property owners and neighborhood leaders who are here making this commitment to the LID today. Because to achieve a big vision in community development, you have to have not just the vision and the plan, but also good partners. Let me illustrate that by comparing Gateway to a few other places. 25 years ago, as a newly-elected city commissioner in charge of the Planning Bureau, I was put on the Metro 2040 Plan Committee. And we looked at the map and listened to the community's hopes and dreams about taking that 1950 suburban model and turning it into a neighborhood center. We brought in Peter Calthorpe, the preeminent urban designer in the country, and we looked at the situation on the land. Two interstate highways, one light rail line then, not three, close to the airport, lots of redevelopment potential. And so we drew a circle on the map and said, regional center, the one and only in Portland. Later, the council adopted the Gateway Urban Annual Area and the Gateway Action Plan. So if good planning alone were enough to set the table for achieving the community's goals, our work was done. Here we are, 25 years later. In those 25 years, a lot of other visions had become real. The Pearl District, the South Waterfront, Burnside Bridgehead, Lentz, but not Gateway. What's the differentiator? In every case, for-profit developers or nonprofit institutions who were, one, local and, two, interested in achieving their goals by helping the community achieve ours, partnered with the city to make it happen. In the Pearl District, Homer Williams, Ed McNamara, Tiffany Switzer, John Carroll, they were great partners. South William, the South Waterfront, Homer Williams again, Peter Kohler and Connie Sealy and Brian Newman from OHSU, Burnside Bridgehead, Brad, Liz and Jonathan Molson, Kevin Kavanaugh and the Crazy Young Team at Guerrilla Development, what a company name. And Lentz, Chad Renneker and Dr. Eric Zito. In each case, we've had partners, either profit or nonprofit developers, who were willing to work to achieve the long-term vision. And I believe that today you have the opportunity to join forces with those kinds of principled private sector partners to make the Gateway vision real. To accomplish that, yes, you'll need to approve this LID and the others that will follow it. You'll also need to share in the cost of the infrastructure and affordable housing because it's impossible to simply get that by planning and requirements, otherwise we'd have it there by now. Mainly, I just encourage you to get to know these property owners and they're going to be here today. It's not one developer, it's several different families that have accumulated this property over time. Take their measure, reach across the table in partnership with them. And if you do, I believe you will take for what has 20, for 25 years, been colors on the map and words on pages and make them into a place that we'll all be proud of. So I look forward to your engagement with them and the livable Gateway nonprofit that hired us to draw some ideas for what might be there and make that idea real.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Witter, Trimat's Executive Director of Capital Projects, and I'm proud to be here today in support of the LID and continue our partnership with the city to improve pedestrian safety and access, not only at this location, but, but system-wide. This particular project is part of a program of improvements that Trimat has undertaken in the last couple of years and foresee to do in the future at all of our light rail stations. And this is part of the oldest part of the system. And so improvements to pedestrian access and safety are certainly due at this location. We have not designed the crossing work yet, but the improvements that we'll typically see there are pedestrian, improved pedestrian wayfinding and signage, improved pedestrian crossings at pathways, including bicycles, and folks with mobility challenges. So we'll look forward to bringing this up to current standards for safety and accessibility. We are proud to be a funding partner in this project and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think our last two are Jennifer Stedman and Gordon Jones. And that will conclude our invited testimony.
Very good. And I understand there's a number of people signed up to testify under public testimony. I want to make sure we get everybody in, so please think about keeping your comments to two minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If I seem a little nervous, it's because I am. It's my first time in front of council, so be there with me.
No worries. We're glad you're here. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name's Jennifer Stedman and I'm the Director of Operations for JMW Properties. Joe Westerman is owner, a partner in this, this Gateway project. In the past, I have worked for a developer that has built multi-use, tax-exempt properties in Northeast Portland. And instead of, I took it upon my, myself to not just allow the affordable housing, I wanted to make sure that I was reaching out to the community, that I was doing what was best for our residents. So in the past several years, I've had open communications with Teen Insight, Central City Concern, Catholic Charities, NAACP, the HUD-VASH program, and Reach and many more. And that was to help build a community that helps support one another. Over the past couple of years, specifically in the Gateway, we have quite a few homes in the Gateway area. I have developed some friendships with the residents that do live down there. And so they don't look at me as necessarily just the landlord, but as a friend. And going through their, I've heard firsthand as, I've heard about, you know, their living conditions and what they'd like to see and what some of, some of the issues that they come up with. They, they have unconnected sidewalks, they have no parks to, to, you know, walk to, to take their children. And sometimes they don't feel safe moving throughout the community and one of them being is the I-205 multi-use path. It takes it to a different level when you're not just a landlord, but you're an advocate as part of, you know, as, for your friends. I take this to heart and, you know, I'm moving forward every day to make this project a reality. I've also joined forces with Join and they, our property management company in the Gateway area specifically, calls Join and they have the first right of refusal every time we have a vacant home. So it's been a neat relationship to, to build with them. Let's see, so out of the, in the Gateway District or in the Gateway area and this development, we, there are roughly, let's see, 32 homes that would be displaced, which we're committed to as the property management company to create an anti-displacement policy. And what that means is we own roughly 233 apartment units within two miles of that area. So as this continues, we would be willing to help offset the relocation cost for the residents in that area, helping them move, not doing any types of rental increases, and also keep an open dialogue with them as, as this progresses to get them moved within their community and then moved back into the Gateway area. So of those 32 homes, we own 17 of those at the moment. So these people have already qualified, they're already paying the rents and, and we're committed to making sure that there is no displacement. And that seems like a small price to pay for being able to build such a large community of which 40% would be affordable. Our goal and my goal is to provide affordable, integrated housing with a safe and stable community with the mindset of helping one another.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Morning.
In the interest of keeping, giving more time to some of the people that are activists in Gateway, have, have worked on this for well over 20 years, I'm going to keep my comments pretty short, but anecdotally, I want to tell you a couple of quick stories. I, I currently live in Gateway. I've lived and worked in Gateway for well over 20 years. Sort of the, my proudest accomplishment is the Rose Apartments, which is built right in the center of this neighborhood.
in the center of this neighborhood and has, has been a functioning forty percent affordable, very socially and economically integrated housing community with.
And I'm sorry, did you say your name for the record already?
Gordon Jones.
Thank you, Gordon.
Gordon Jones.
Thank you.
So I live in another residential community called Gateway Arbers that I built. When I built that, we displaced about nine homes that were in the area, older homes, but two of those, I moved one and moved some people with it when we relocated it. Two others were elderly women living alone, and we did this in phases. I moved both of them into the first phase, and they lived there until they passed away, both of them. So I tend to get very involved with things that I work on. I live right in, I live in that very project, if you will, right now, and it was condominium homes, but also had, worked with, on the Rose, we worked with Metro, Portland Bureau of Transportation, Portland Housing Bureau, Bureau of Environmental Services, and Prosper Portland on that project, and everything I've done in Gateway has been a city partnership. So this is nothing new, and this vision is, has, is, the neighborhood vision has been going on for, as you know, well over twenty years. It's taken a long time to assemble all these small, older homes, many of which are vacant or boarded up, so it's, it's something we've been working on and a vision we've held for many, many years, and I think we're getting close. It takes one LID and one street at a time to make it happen, so thank you.
Thank you for being here, appreciate it. Thank you. Carla, how many people do we have signed up for public testimony on this item?
We have six people.
Very good. Two minutes each, please name for the record. Come on up.
The first three are Curtis Faith, Bruce Johnson, and Christopher Masiocchi, I believe is the last name.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Curtis Michael Faith, and I have been a real estate developer on a small scale. I've been in finance, my primary background is in tech, and I've written three books, mainly about my early experience in finance. The reason that I'm addressing this particular issue is because I have walked the city probably a thousand miles in the last six months because I'm intending to bring in a lot of business associated with technology and entertainment businesses that I have been gestating in my mind as I've been working on a book on poverty for the last eleven years. And I find that this particular site is very interesting because there's, a lot of the problems of the city are present in the site currently, and yet there is a tremendous opportunity there. I saw that as one of the primaries, that I would like to personally participate in bringing in some businesses. I think that the timing of some of the development is something that the council could certainly push in a direction that would make it much easier to get things to happen more quickly and to address the affordable housing. For example, if you put the affordable housing units up first, then you're not going to have a whole bunch of people worried about not being able to have housing, and it also provides places for workers to live, potentially if they're coming in from out of town. Likewise, the problem of the homelessness in the city in that particular area is particularly acute as you're near the highway. There's lots of danger in, or perceived danger in the homeless. I've actually been underground as a homeless person four or five of the last years in Rotterdam in Europe, in various places in Germany, and also in DC and in Portland for eighty percent of the last six months, even though that wasn't my intent when I got here. There are some specific things that need to be addressed, and I'd like to talk with them about the council later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, we appreciate that. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Bruce Johnson, I'm the President of Columbia Corridor Association, and I figured you were tired of hearing Corky all the time, so I came in his stead. These additional housing we're talking about in the breaking up of these, I'll say, non-Portland superblocks, when the city is sold by Travel Portland, they talk about how Portland has walkable blocks. What Andrew presented with a superblock is not a Portland thing. I think Gateway needs to be a Portland thing. We're desperately needing safe places to walk in that area. Those puddles, it'd be fun as a kid to ride my bike through, but we're talking about adults and families. That is to improve. My employees live there and come to the airport every week, every day. We need something done in Gateway, and I think the LID is what we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Wheeler and Council, my name is Christopher Masiocchi. I live and work in Gateway, and I've been engaged in trying to uplift that area for about thirteen years. I know we're here really to talk about the LID, and my notes here have largely to do with the bigger picture, so I'll try to pare it down. But one of the things I really appreciate is that the folks involved in this have really reached out to the community, and we feel genuinely like they care about all the issues that have been brought up here today. What I love is that the vision for this development is of a really high caliber, and it resonates with the original vision of Gateway as a true regional center. When Metro designated Gateway as a regional center over twenty years ago, it did so because of the area's intrinsic values. It was a profound and unparalleled transportation hub, it's even more of one now, and it's increasingly important as we focus on creating transit-oriented development. During those years, outer east Portland has become the most diverse place in the entire state of Oregon, and that in itself is a huge asset that we need to look at. Of course, all of that growth comes with a challenge, and one of those things, if you look at P-Bot's Equity Matrix map, if you look at it today, Portland is basically divided into two sections, split right down I-205. And the fates of those two areas are, have been really different, the west side prospering like never before and the east side experiencing a lot of disinvestment. So it's interesting to me, though, that Gateway lies right in the middle of those two things. It's a really, really unique opportunity to, as Commissioner Hardisty said, take all the lessons we learned from revitalizing other areas of the city and really applying those lessons that we learned, right? This is where we can do it right. We can make something that's truly equitable, and from what I understand of this project, that really is the goal, that this is something that will integrate people, it will be, you know, affordable and market rate and have amenities. They're thinking about families and those green spaces that they're talking about, you know, they're juxtaposed, they've got.
Thank you.
Daycare and those sorts of things.
Thank you.
You know, so it's really, really important, and.
Got it. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Time is up. Next three people, please.
Our Linda Robinson, Frida Christopher, and Courtney Shannon.
Do you just need a desk here?
Might be, because I'll be back tomorrow, we can.
Thank you. Welcome. Would you like to start?
Yes. Good morning. I'm Linda Robinson, and I too am a resident of the Gateway area. I have been working with Prosper Portland and others for more than twenty years to make something happen in this urban renewal area, and I am really excited that this project is coming forward. I'm excited partly because the developers live and work in the area. I'm really excited about the mixed housing. I know we need a lot more affordable housing, but we also need market-rate housing. We need to have a good mixture of both, and the projects that will follow this LID will have a good mix, not a separate building for the people who can only afford the affordable and another building for the people who, you know, have a little more money, but they're mixed together in housing units. This is really something that we need in the Gateway area. So I'm, and the improvements to the Max Crossing at Ninety-seventh is really, that whole section from Burnside to Gleason is a problem area, really unsafe, the crossing the streets in particular, really unsafe, and these improvements will be greatly appreciated, and sidewalks and all of that. So I'm very much in support of the LID, and I know a lot about the projects that will follow, and I'm excited about those as well.
Thank you.
Gosh, Linda kept it under two minutes. My name is Frida Christopher, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for having me here today. I'm co-chair of the East Portland Action Plan Housing Subcommittee, as well as have been on the Gateway URAC for its whole existence and was part, was part of the writer, writing of the concept plan for Gateway.
Excuse me, Frida, just for the people who are listening, what's a URAC?
Oh, sorry. Urban, it's Advisory Committee for the Urban Renewal Area. They no longer exist out there for Gateway, Lentz, and I believe Interstate. I'm also, have been on the school board of David Douglas, which Gateway is in, for the last twenty-eight years. I support, and our committee sent a letter of support for this LID, but I want to just broaden it a little bit and look at the next LID, which is very key, because that is where city investment will be needed. Two million from Prosper Portland and two million from P-Bot. But in that, the private developers will be taking responsibility for eight million dollars, and that's just the infrastructure. It has nothing to do with building the units themselves. The District, people say, well, five years ago, we were talking about overcrowding. We're seeing displacement occurring now, not from this project, just from gentrification in the area. It is happening now. Our Housing Bureau is looking at a preference policy for affordable housing in East Portland because of that displacement. What is very nice about this project and its location is Douglas has a piece of property at the Transit Center that is for a future urban-built elementary school. When we build this, this project, as it comes to fruition, will also drive when we build our urban elementary school. So they are all connected. I just happen to be on several committees that connect them all together and the different input. I'd like to see both of these LIDs move forward with the city investment. It's what is needed in this area for something to get going.
Thanks, Frida.
I'm trying to finish quick.
Appreciate it, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Since we're throwing around credentials today, my name is Courtney Shannon. I have a degree in computer system engineering, and I will speak for anyone and everybody in this town and have regarding houselessness and people being displaced. So name any agency I've spoken for, I've worked with Joanne writing some laws, and I figured maybe if I dress better, you won't kick me out today because I went off subject, in your opinion, which it wasn't, by the way. But I want to speak to the money. I mean, I don't think that having that much affordable housing with that kind of criteria is realistic, especially not in this town. How about people with no income like me? How about people who fall in the cracks like me? What are you going to do with them? And I have to agree, please don't put people in different buildings, that's stupid. How better to educate people that houseless people and people of low income are no different than you and me than to put everybody together in one box and have them play together? But I don't understand why it is that more people aren't being helped through this. Certainly, I heard the man with my own two ears. He said, "We will make anything possible that you want possible, so go for it." The city does have the money, you know you do. If you didn't spend all that money sweeping and killing people and taking it out of the housing fund, you would certainly have more money to throw towards this. It's inexcusable, and I really hope that you lean towards doing that, because people are dying out here because you refuse to stop the sweeps and give them housing. Have a good day.
That completes public testimony, Carla, is that correct?
Yes, that's all.
Very good. Colleagues, any further discussion or questions? This is a resolution. Carla, please call the roll.
Fritz?
Well, this is a really pleasant surprise. I was expecting a fairly routine local improvement district, that's what it looked like from the documents, and so I'm really excited to see that this is, in fact, the long-awaited Gateway development starting off. And congratulations to the community, because I know that there's many, many organizations and individuals who've worked really, really hard on this, property owners, community members, and a lot of people coming together. We want to particularly thank Chris Scarsello, who was here earlier today, who's been a longtime planner in East Portland and has been a part of this, and also Corky Collier, and just, it's a lot of stuff, I could just go around the room, and it's fabulous that you all, many of you were able to be here to see this actually starting to happen. Commissioner Charlie Hales took a chance with a thirty-eight-year-old young, well, I was young then, environmentalist neighborhood activist, and put me on the Planning Commission right when the Gateway plan was coming through, and so it's, going back to our age-friendly resolution, there's certain advantages to living, to be sixty, to find out that things actually do take a lot of time to come to the right point, but it looks like this is actually going to start to happen. My parents-in-law live at Cherrywood Village in the Gateway District. There's many affordable senior living situations in this area. I go there often, and especially since the Gateway Discovery Park was finished and is now just such a magnet for good activity in this entire region, so I'm really excited that we're getting going. I look forward to hearing many more details about the proposed development and what the requests from the city will be, because obviously it will need to be a public-private partnership. The staff time for the Bureau of Transportation is definitely needed for a street improvement project, and also there's a whole lot more going on, and so I'm really looking forward to getting more information about it. I.
Fisch?
Well, first I want to thank Commissioner Udaley for bringing this forward today. I also want to thank Andrew Abbey, who is really a model public servant. I think every bureau wishes they had a handful of Andrew Abys to help us build consensus.
Hands off.
I'd also be remiss if I didn't publicly thank Linda Robinson, who is here today. I think it was Commissioner Fritz who first introduced me to Linda. In the last few months, Linda has turned over the mantle of leadership in a number of organizations to some new faces in East Portland. But frankly, I can't think of someone who has been consistently so often on the right side of issues involving East Portland equity and East Portland parks, and she is also one of the driving visions and driving people behind Gateway Green. So Linda, thank you very much for all of your, your great work. We don't often have former mayors come back and testify, but I really appreciated something Mayor Hales said, and I think it, it helps us, what he was doing was preaching a certain level of humility about the development process and the planning process. And I think it's worth taking a moment just to reflect that there were a number of years, particularly when I was serving on this body over the last ten, when there wasn't a lot going on in Lentz, there wasn't a lot going on in Gateway. There was some criticism about the pace of development in South Waterfront, when Veterans' Memorial Coliseum was the subject of a lot of well-intentioned plans, but no clear vision about how to fund it and where it would fit in a rejuvenated Rose Quarter. And what Mayor Hales reminds us is that without market forces driving good planning, things don't happen. Without good private and nonprofit partners willing to invest, good things don't happen. What we have is well-intentioned plans that remain on the books. What has happened in the last three or four years is with a vengeance, the market came back and private capital came in, flooded into our community, and you've seen development in South Waterfront and Lentz, you see, in my view, a very compelling vision for how to build out the Rose Quarter, you're seeing the Innovation Quadrant and plans for the post office site, but that's because people are ready to invest. And all the planning in the world does not ensure that people are willing to invest. People invest when market conditions are right, and we've had an unprecedented run of good fortune, really, in the last three or four years. So now we have folks in Gateway willing to invest in Gateway's next chapter, and I think it's very exciting. What I think you've heard, though, today is that while this particular LID is relatively straightforward, once we start talking about significant contributions from the Portland Development Commission and other public resources. once we start talking about significant contributions from the Portland Development Commission and other public resources, the council is going to be more likely to ask the tougher questions about, what are we going to get long-term? What's the return on investment? So I look forward to having that conversation, but today, I'm very pleased to support this LID. Aye. Hardesty?
Thank you so much. I also want to appreciate Andrew. Being in the hot seat is probably never fun, but I appreciate your grace and your thoughtfulness in making this presentation. I care about Gateway, not just because I live in Gateway, but because I have lived in the city for over 30 years. And I have heard the promises of development. I've heard who was going to benefit, who was going to get the jobs that were going to create these new beautiful buildings. And over and over and over again, we have failed to live up to what it was we said we wanted to do. And so I am cautiously optimistic, because I've worked with Frida, and I've worked with the East Portland Action Plan, and I've worked with Linda for the last nine years as part of the East Portland Action Plan. And I know that there are people, as part of the East Portland Action Plan, that will hold us accountable to doing what it is we say that we want to do. We do have an opportunity to do something good and meaningful for the people and residents who live in Gateway. And I hope that this starts that process. But I can assure you that when you come back for the next LED, LID, that there will be some hard questions. And I'm going to be looking for, like, real numbers and not just terms like affordable housing, because, again, I don't think that term means anything anymore. I think what we need to talk about is making sure we have housing at every income level in every neighborhood in the city of Portland, and that Gateway could possibly be that model. Some of the developments that we've talked about that have been successful, they've been successful for some people. And certainly, some of those developers have made a bucket load of money off of those developments. But the people, the low-income people, the services that were supposed to be there are still absent. And so I will vote yes, and I will look forward to our next conversation. Aye.
Udaley?
Well, thank you to Andrew Abbey and all our partners on this project. I want to also thank community members who came out today to testify. I put a lot of stock in what Frida and Linda have to say. And the fact that you support this step is heartening to me. I'm looking forward to working together with all of you on the next steps, and I commit to holding the project accountable to our equity and housing goals and helping craft an LID that brings meaningful community benefits for everyone in East Portland. I vote aye.
Wheeler?
I want to thank everybody who testified today. Andrew, thank you. I appreciated the opportunity to go out and visit the site, walk around with both the prospective developers as well as former Mayor Hales, and I had an opportunity to see how the vision might look over the longer term. In the near term, we really have a pragmatic question before us, which is the approval of the LID process. It makes perfect sense to me that we do this. And by the way, the long-term vision is one that is very compelling. My suspicion is, as Prosper becomes more engaged, as the Housing Bureau becomes more engaged in this process, and they're already, as I said in my introductory remarks, having the conversations. This is a bold vision, because there has been a lot of talk around Gateway and East Portland that has not been realized. We have a location that is central. It is on a transportation node. In fact, several transportation nodes. It is a diverse area, and it is an affordable area. And therefore, the opportunity before us is obvious. But I want to be really clear, realizing the vision is not going to be easy. There will be lots of trade-offs, lots of questions, as you heard today from our colleagues. And despite common perception, resources, particularly resources for housing at very low levels of income, are scarce. And we, as a council, will ultimately have to decide on our own, as well as in partnership with our regional partners, when we're talking about the deployment of the regional housing bond dollars, we're going to have to pick priorities. And that's the conversation that we'll have in the future. That's not today. Today's about the LID. I vote aye. The resolution's adopted. Thank you. Carla, could you please read item number 226 from the regular agenda? I'm sorry?
226 is being...
Okay.
Moved to the end of the agenda.
So you want to move 22, you want to go, what are we doing with 226? Okay, fair enough. We'll move to items 227, 228, and 234. We're going to read those together.
Item 227 requests the federal government update studies on the potential health risk of 5G radio frequency wireless emissions and published findings as federal guidelines push for more rapid deployment of 5G. 228, grant a temporary revocable permit to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for wireless communications services in the city. And 234, amend transportation fee schedule to charge fees associated with the Master Lease Agreement and wireless small cell permits and associated fees.
Colleagues, these are all related items. 227 is a resolution. 228 is the second reading of an ordinance. 234 is also an ordinance. The items we're hearing today are part of a concerted effort to thoughtfully manage small cell technology in the public right-of-way. I'm going to ask Commissioner Fritz first to introduce a resolution that urges the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, to take timely action to study and regulate radio frequency emissions from small cell technology to protect human health. So I'll ask you to introduce item number 227 for us first, please, Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor. In May 2009, the Portland City Council unanimously passed a resolution, in fact, we passed it twice. We passed it unanimously, 3-0, and then we introduced it again so we could pass it 5-0, because the council felt very strongly that we should ask the Federal Communications Commission and the Federal Drug Administration to update studies related to potential hazardous health impacts of radio frequency radiation emitted from wireless equipment. The FCC and the FDA have not done that. And we have had that on our federal lobbying agenda, I believe, every year since then. And despite the assistance of our federal delegation, have not been able to push the FCC to look at it. In my mind, it's very similar to in the olden days when the tobacco executives said that they didn't believe that tobacco was harmful because they hadn't read the studies. Well, this goes even one step further, in that if we don't even do the study, then, of course, nobody can read it. So 10 years later, we find ourselves again asking our federal government to prioritize the health and safety of our communities. In the blink of an eye, it seems, wireless technology has permeated nearly every aspect of our lives. It's hard to imagine existing without it. When I'm on the bus every morning, I see almost everybody is looking at their phones, despite David Morrison having taught me in 2012 not to use mine because it's dangerous. Now, the fifth generation of mobile internet connectivity, or 5G, has many people intrigued with the promise of even faster data download and upload speeds and energy savings, and it will boost the capabilities of driverless cars and other cutting-edge technologies. But so what cost? Federal law preempts states and local governments, including the city of Portland, from considering health concerns in the regulation and placement of wireless facilities. We simply are not allowed to consider that when we look at the remainder of the agenda on this topic. And this is despite scientific research that has demonstrated exposure to electromagnetic radiation may increase cancer risk and other poor health outcomes. The results of the longest and most expensive study to date on the link between radio frequency radiation associated with 2G and 3G cell phones and cancer were released on November 1st of 2018 by the National Toxicology Program. The study found evidence of cancerous heart tumors, as well as some evidence of cancerous brain tumors, in male rats exposed to high levels of radio frequency radiation, like that used in 2G and 3G cell phones. The study did not examine 5G, which relies on the deployment of many more antennas and transmissions, resulting in much closer human contact to radiation, and nor did it study 4G. In response to this study, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued recommendations to limit exposure of children to cell phones. Representatives Alyssa Kenny-Gaya and Tona Sanchez and Senator Laurie Monozaneston also recently introduced bills to the Oregon Legislature to project children from electromagnetic radiation in schools. The harmful effects of electromagnetic radiation may extend to the environment. After reviewing over 97 studies on how electromagnetic radiation may affect the environment, a European Union review body concluded that this radiation causes disorientation in birds and insects and compromises plant health. Their report warns that the switch to 5G may intensify this threat. There is still a gap in research to help us more fully understand the effects of exposure to wireless technology, especially 4G and 5G. That is why we are again calling on the Federal Communications Commission and relevant federal agencies to update studies and make results publicly available. We join other elected officials who have recently made similar requests, including Sioux Falls Mayor Paul Tenhaken, U.S. Senator Richard Blumenthal, and Congresswoman Anna Eschew. Thank you to the many, many community members who have reached out to our offices on this issue, and to my colleagues for supporting this resolution, particularly Mayor Hales. Mayor, dang it, he was here earlier, and that's a long time since I've made that mistake, Mayor Wheeler, I apologize. Particularly Mayor Wheeler and Commissioner Udaley for co-sponsoring the resolution.
Any questions for Commissioner Fritz on 227 before we introduce 234?
I've got some opening remarks as well.
Please, Commissioner Udaley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for your work on addressing the potential health impacts of new communications infrastructure. As we know, there's ample evidence that the mobile phone industry has systematically suppressed medical research into the impact of mobile devices and the wireless networks that support them. Much like the tobacco and gun industries, the industry is choosing to obfuscate health issues instead of trying to understand them. It's an embarrassment that our national government not only won't do the research, but also is preventing us from even considering the issue at a local level. The resolution before us today, like a similar resolution passed by a previous city council, is unlikely to have an impact on national policy. The goal of the resolution is to explain the council's practical options while helping the public understand the situation that we're in. Shortly, interim Assistant Director of P-Bot Noah Siegel and Elizabeth Perez will be here to discuss the 5G items in great detail. But I'd like to make a couple of introductory points. First, the agreement and fee schedule in front of us today were written by city employees and the city attorney, not lawyers at the FCC or a wireless company. That's important, because the FCC recently set a national rate for 5G carriers to compensate cities for access to infrastructure. Corporations have successfully lobbied our current administration to preempt local governments' ability to control our infrastructure. That is unacceptable to me, and I believe our whole council. Generations of Portlanders have invested hundreds of millions of dollars in building and maintaining our infrastructure, city streets, water and sewer lines, parks. And we need to take aggressive steps to resist relinquishing control of our own assets to corporate interests. That's what's in front of us today. The agreement with AT&amp;T will compensate Portlanders at roughly 10 times the rate the FCC is trying to impose on us, and they will preserve our freedom to manage property owned by the people of Portland. That concludes my remarks.
Very good. Any further comments on 227 before we bring up Noah and Elizabeth? Very good. So now we'll hear from Noah Siegel, who is from the Portland Bureau of Transportation, and Elizabeth Perez, who is my Operations Director and currently the Acting Director of the Office of Community Technology, who are going to talk a little bit about our city's strategy around small cell deployment. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. As the mayor said, my name is Elizabeth Perez. I am the mayor's Operations Director and current Acting Director for the Office for Community Technology. Commissioner Fritz already outlined, but I'll reiterate, that the city lacks legal authority to regulate small cells based on radio frequency emissions. The city does, however, have legal authority to ensure that the residents of Portland are not stripped of their voices when decisions must be made related to their streets, sidewalks, and light poles that they use and they pay for every day. The Office for Community Technology is charged with maintaining local control over local infrastructure and ensuring that private corporations who ask to use the public right-of-way for private profit are not unfairly burdened to the city's residents. The current FCC has issued recent administrative orders that undermine the city's ability to maintain local control over local infrastructure. The FCC's actions have not gone unanswered by this council or city staff. In October 2018, City Council directed the city attorney to challenge the FCC's actions in court. The litigation does not seek to block the deployment of small cells or 5G, but rather challenges the FCC's misguided invasion of local authority. The litigation asserts that the local control of Portland's largest physical asset, the public right-of-way, is the best way to benefit local residents. In its administrative orders limiting local control, the FCC also suggests that the reasonable cost to local governments for each small cell deployed in the right-of-way is $270 per small cell per year. According to the City Budget Office, a conservative estimate of forgone revenue to the city due to the FCC's opinion is $3.7 million over five years. However, the FCC did go on to acknowledge that residents should not subsidize any corporation's costs to deploy small cells. Accordingly, the FCC authorized local governments to recover its reasonable costs associated with small cell deployment. And Noah will elaborate on these costs for the city of Portland. The city of Portland has been recognized as a national leader in asserting local control over local assets. We will continue to fight for local control in court. The city also works to maintain local control over local assets when it grants permission to entities to access the public right-of-way. That work is evidenced in the balanced approach before you today to deploy small cells and 5G in a manner that benefits all Portland residents.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Noah Siegel, interim Assistant Director of the Portland Bureau of Transportation. I'd like to just pick up where Elizabeth left off and say that staff from the Bureau of Transportation, from the Office of Community Technology, with assistance from City Attorney, worked hard to bring the best possible options, choices we could here to counsel today. As Elizabeth was saying, we are the guardians of the public right-of-way. Some approximately one-fifth of the city's real estate belongs to the people of Portland in the form of its sidewalks, streets, and everything above and below that space as well, which is increasingly important to the digital economy. So that wealth belongs to the people of Portland, and we took very seriously the city's position in negotiating the value of that, the cost recovery of that, as the private sector sought to advance plans for 5G. We have a window of opportunity, I should say, because our market is valuable to the carriers. They want to come into the Portland market and other key markets. So it's an opportunity for us to be proactive in setting what we think is the value of that cost of entry. I do want to say that we were guided from the outset in our negotiations by clear principles that were laid forward by Transportation Commissioner Chloe Udaley and Mayor Wheeler, that we should be guided by our focus on digital inclusion as a moral and economic imperative, that the management of the right-of-way is to support the well-being of our residents, that we need to secure fair and reasonable compensation for the city and its residents when we carry out these negotiations, that 5G should support our digital equity plan, and that the city should continue to fairly and responsibly protect public health, as Commissioner Fritz's resolution points to today. So those were the things that we kept in mind as we took part in these, I would say, very aggressive negotiations. While we have very good relations with our counterparts, the carriers here locally, working to a good outcome, I should say that we were not dealt a great hand, that the Trump administration's FCC has put us at a disadvantage. We had, council had approved several years ago, established rates for small cell technology based on market value and geography. So at $5,500 a year in the central city for an attachment, $3,500 a year outside the central cities. This was based, again, on market value. The FCC told us that we could only evaluate costs based on cost recovery. So that whole methodology was unacceptable under the FCC rule. We vigorously disagree with that point of view. Portland is leading the way in court, leading other cities to challenge it, and we will fight it quite hard. fight it quite hard. But that said, the FCC ordinance, the FCC rule is the law of the land at the moment. So we're forced with a difficult choice, and we decided to be proactive in our negotiations under the current FCC rule to bring you the best possible option that we could in negotiations with the carriers. So what we landed on was a franchise fee of $1,250 per small cell, which was a continuation of the logic of the pilot franchise fee that council approved and was endorsed by the carriers at the time, despite the fact that they then at a federal level said they wanted to only pay $270. So we thought $1,250 for the franchise fee based on that precedent made a lot of sense, and that in addition, we charged a $750 lease fee to cover cost recovery at PBO for running this program, which will have to scale up very quickly as Singular and other carriers enter the market. So you put those costs together to $2,000, significantly more than the FCC's $270, and by our estimations, at the high mark of national fees charged to 5G small cell carriers. So we considered that to be quite a success. In addition, we have the one-time fees that cover all costs for installation and attachment under the master lease agreement. That means that the public doesn't subsidize in any way the installation of these small cell attachments. So this question of the cost to the right-of-way, cost recovery is a challenging one. It's a new methodology. We've always charged market value, and we, as I said, will continue to challenge this approach around cost recovery. But that said, we also think costs to the city are quite extensive for operating in the right-of-way. Of course, you have the obvious costs of street maintenance and, you know, digging up the street and putting in fiber and covering it back up and all of that stuff. But in addition, we have the more expansive costs, that things that are, go unseen every day, emergency services, lighting, all the things, the stormwater, all the things that keep the right-of-way up and running. We are doing a study right now to evaluate those complete costs, and we may come back to you to revise what we think is the true cost recovery. But at this point in time, we believe we brought you the most competitive contract, the most competitive franchise and lease fee that we possibly can. It's leading in the country. And I just, you know, I want to say that, again, it's not circumstances of our choosing, but the choice that we've brought to you is the following: We can take the rates that we've negotiated aggressively on behalf of the people of Portland with the values that guided us, or we can be reactive to the industry, which will then be able to attempt to enter our market. If we don't approve that, they can then sue us, most likely win, and then we will be in the process of trying to negotiate back up our rates from 270 to what we believe to be the true cost recovery. So I think that we could, I understand there's a clear choice here, and it's not entirely tasteful, given the circumstances, but those are the options, that we can take the hardest deal that we've been able to negotiate while the market is in our favor and the carriers want to enter, and we can set some terms that we think are largely fair or as fair as can be, or wait and react and hope to achieve a better outcome later. Not an easy decision, but I do have a huge amount of confidence in the staff that brought this forward and can answer any questions about that. So thank you for your consideration. We think that we've worked hard to deliver the best value for the right-of-way for the public good of all Portlanders.
Thanks, Noah.
I have a question.
Commissioner Fritz.
Has there been any discussion to make sure that the companies deploy this technology everywhere? In other words, that they don't avoid the less affluent neighborhoods? If we're going under the assumption that it's a good thing to have the highest speed internet, which I think, obviously, that's something that question, but has there been any discussion of equitable distribution, whether this is a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, certainly, we think it's a good thing, and we have been pushing hard on the issues of digital inclusion. I do think that you could make an expansive case that some of the cost to the public that's incurred by deployment in the public right-of-way is inequitable deployment, and so does the public then have to carry that. So I think we've brought that up. We're not in a strong position on that issue with the FCC, where they basically say the carriers have the right to deploy as a starting point.
But my question is, are we making sure that they're going to deploy in outer East Portland as well as they are in inner East Portland?
No, I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's very hard for us to set that condition. We have an offer from AT&amp;T that put forward an investment of $200,000 to fund digital inclusion work. We'll continue to negotiate using the market entry advantage that we have to say this is important, but we don't have the ability to negotiate where and when they deploy. That's market-driven, and that's an issue for us.
And do we know what's happening in other parts of Montlochamp County? I know for other, for the cable system, there's a Metro East as well as Open Signal. So is there other, have there been negotiations for the rest of Montlochamp County for Gresham or anywhere else?
Based on the cable franchise?
For 5G, is, are any companies pursuing 5G in our neighbors to the east?
To the, I mean, I think they're pursuing in most everywhere. I know that Hillsborough and, and to the west, they've pursued, as you're saying, because of the market demand. To the east, I think they are in talks, right, with Gresham and further east, yeah.
Jennifer Loomis.
Jennifer.
Hi.
Is the mic?
Jennifer Lee from the Office for Community Technology. In regards to your question, Commissioner Fritz, I believe in our conversations with other jurisdictions, the carriers are talking to everybody. We're not alone in feeling sort of the pressure and the desire to deploy 5G. I think various cities are in various stages. Gresham, I think, moved to a code provision, so I don't, I don't recall offhand if they've, if they negotiate franchise.
So we might actually be helping our neighbors in setting a standard that will help their economies and also make it so that companies can adopt ours as a model code and do it in less affluent areas.
Yes, that's true. Portland is the largest jurisdiction, so I think other cities will look to us.
Thank you.
But we don't have, as on the cable franchise, a unified approach to working with all them. But I think that that's right. Setting the standard, we've been in touch with many other cities about our approach, and I think that can help them.
I think we're also, because we are working with the carriers on design standards, we're doing a pretty good job at that, and other cities are looking to us as a model for that.
And remember when we started with the, the previous iteration of cell phones, and a lot of the concern from neighbors was that the boxes were the size of refrigerators, that they made a lot of noise, that, you know, how big are the boxes that 5G uses?
We, have we set the design standards yet?
We are in the process of working on design standards, and they are significantly smaller than that now, but this remains a consideration for us. So we've had, it'll be part of our rulemaking rollout around, you know, that it has to comply with design standards. So that's been an issue around the, some of the historical, yes.
And with cell towers and the, we've got design standards in the zoning code on cell towers, will these design standards come back to council?
They don't have to, but they could, yeah.
I would suggest it might be in all of our best interests that they do come back to council for a decision, so that we then don't, all five of our offices get lobbied about
Right.
this box is too big, too small, too noisy, whatever.
Right.
And I would say that the FCC did, has perimeters around design standards and size, and what we are doing is working with the carriers to try to shrink that down. So legally, they're allowed to go much bigger, but they're coming to the table and talking to us about ones that are, we think are more appropriate.
So it might be helpful to you and strengthen your position to be able to have a public hearing where lots of neighbors, based on past history, will come in and say, "We don't want refrigerator sounds pervasing through our neighborhoods."
Right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hirsty.
Thank you, Mayor. My question has to do with the $200,000 digital inclusion. What is that supposed to do?
It was an offer that the carrier, Singular in this case, put on the table, and we don't have a, you know, a direct way of accepting offer like that. So what we recommended is that they work on a plan with Coalition of Communities of Color and to come up with a strategy for how that could be best deployed. So that's where it currently stands right now, but to be honest, it's open for discussion with the, with the company.
I would hope, I would hope that there would actually be a plan, right? When we talk about digital inclusion, I, we're talking seniors, we're talking people with English as a second language, we're talking, you, we're talking a whole host of folks who don't have access, and A, I think that's way too low. AT&amp;T has, you know, they could, they could do better if they were really about digital inclusion, and so I think that figure is way, way too low, and I think it's not clearly clarified. So just giving some money to some organization does not actually equate to digital inclusion. So I'm very concerned that, A, again, it's way too little, and B, that there's not a plan to actually make sure that we're really engaging the folks that are going to be most left out.
I, I would agree with you, Commissioner Hirsty. I think that the, the purpose of those funds, and we could talk about how best to use them, is to write that plan. We don't have an updated plan for 5G digital inclusion, the way that we did twenty years ago for the rollout of cable, where there, it was under the federal law that the certain percentage of the proceeds had to go to community access. That's not true for 5G. So we need to develop a new plan for how to do this, and to, just to be frank, we don't have one. It's coming at us pretty quickly, so.
So can we do that?
That's the purpose of those, of those funds, yeah.
Why do we need a plan, another plan for 5G when we've already got one for digital equity?
So I was going to say that we have asked them to use the guidelines of our digital equity action plan.
Thank you.
So there are, there is an outline, and they'll be working with the Office for Community Technology, and then they've been working with the mayor's office and Commissioner Yu Daily's office.
And it seems like they, the money could go to the Matt Hood Cable Regulatory Commission, which already does the grants for the action plan implementation. Why couldn't, why couldn't the money go there?
We can look into that.
Or
Commissioner Hirsty.
East Portland Action Plan as the, you know, if it's gonna, I, I mean, I just think that there, there should be a bigger conversation about where it goes. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that would be the right approach, but I'm, I'm just concerned that there's no plan, right?
But there is, we've got a digital equity action plan, so why are we not just put, it's a digital equity action plan, which we funded, Commissioner.
Yes, and we have asserted that that is what we would like them to use.
But I'd like to clarify, though, that, I agree, we have the digital equity plan. What we don't have are legal and financial mechanisms to require the carriers to fund any of that. And so we, there's no requirement of them to carve out a piece of profit, and now we're in this scenario where the FCC is saying it can only be cost recovery. So this is going to be, that's where we need a plan. How are we going to address these questions of digital inclusion as things shift over to 5G? It's going to be a technical challenge, you know, a financial and technical challenge.
Well, when they're going to give us $200,000, we have a plan for how to, what to do.
For this money, yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. Very good. Any further questions of this panel before we open it up to public conversation? Commissioner Yu Daily, I have in my notes, it was your intent to remove the emergency clause from item 234, is that correct?
Yes, they moved, removed the emergency clause from item 234.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hirsty. We have a second from Commissioner Fish.
No, from Yu Daily.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Yu Daily.
It's contagious.
It's one of those days. It must be Wednesday. Carla, please call the roll on the amendment.
Fritz.
Hi.
Fish.
Aye.
Hirsty.
Aye.
Yu Daily.
Aye.
Wheeler.
All right, the amendment's adopted. The emergency clause has come off item 234. With that, we are now opening it up to public testimony. Carla, how many people do we have signed up?
We have eleven.
Very good. Two minutes each, please. Name for the record.
The first three, please, coming up, are Alan Barr, Curtis Faith, and Brian Liu, and they'll be followed by Tracy Fleeman-Garcia, Maggie, and I believe the name is Tina Darcy.
Good afternoon. Would you like to start?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor Daily and Commissioners. My name is Alan Barr, and in
[Laughter]
I totally, I totally deserve that. And what a shame, your time is up.
Hey now.
I am Mayor Yu Daily, so we're
Oh, sorry.
No, it was good. I totally deserved that.
Sorry, I was thinking of Mayor Yu, Yu Daily, I mean, I was thinking of Commissioner Yu Daily. I'm an engineer. I don't normally do this. My apologies.
That's my excuse as well. That's my excuse.
I heard Mayor Daily, and so that's fine with me. I may be related to them, but it's, yeah, okay.
All right, start all over again. We'll give you your two minutes back. Thank you.
Yeah, so like Yu Daily, I'm a Gen Xer, so I was a little like, you know, we got the apathetic rap here today. But I'm a Gen Xer who's not sitting on the sidelines. I'm out there trying to make the world a better place. So Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, I'm also an engineer from Verizon here in Portland, and thank you for this opportunity to comment. I'm commenting on item 234. This is a critical issue, not just for Verizon, but for all the residents in the city, and for someone like me who was born and raised in Portland, loves the city, and is now raising a bunch of digital natives here, myself. I'm going to read you a quote. Legacy hierarchies and institutional structures are bottlenecks to developing the new economy. Portland must innovate in both by establishing partnerships with industry, education, and other governmental bodies, and by reforming our government institutions and policies to root out silos of control and resistance to change. That is a quote from the city of Portland's own broadband strategic plan. 5G brings with its the potential to narrow, if not close, the digital divide, as well as enable a revolution in smart city technologies that will enhance public services, improve traffic flow and pedestrian and bicycle safety, enable autonomous and connected vehicles, enhance disaster preparedness and public safety efforts, and facilitate increased environmental monitoring and carbon reduction. Portland needs a new regulatory framework that eliminates unnecessary barriers for wireless carriers to place fiber and small cell antennas throughout the city to speed the deployment of 5G and bring technologies and tools that can dramatically improve the way Portland, all across the cities, works and lives. Unfortunately, the proposed small cell and master lease agreement fee schedules being proposed by PBO does the opposite. When cities use their control of the right-of-way to charge thousands of dollars in annual rent for every single small cell, plus thousands of dollars more in permitting fees for each facility, charges that may be untethered or discernible or reasonable approximations of actual costs, it erects barriers to entries that force wireless carriers who are making investment decisions across the nation to invest those resources elsewhere. We don't want that to happen. This is basic economics, and the more expensive something is, the fewer of it you can afford to bill. Small cells are no different.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Curtis Michael Faith, again. I have several interest in this. First of all, I don't recommend that you wait for the FCC. I think you should fund and/or get together with some other mayor's offices to do some independent investigations so you can be sure of the health hazards. I would also say, as a physicist and engineer, that it may be that the 5G, even though it appears to be more harmful and the cells are closer because the power are lower, it may be that, that you're running into situations that there would be less danger. So this is something we should study. And I also recommend that, I'm going to be trying to work with some of the school systems to have some after-school educational programs where people are able to learn, starting in elementary school, about electronics and about radio waves and the different frequencies and what that means. The, the higher frequencies that are being used for 5G, for example, have, they don't penetrate as, as much, and there, there's a bunch of different characteristics of radio waves as you, as you change frequencies, and most people don't know what they are. But it's the kind of thing you could teach somebody in fifth grade, and then they would remember, and then we could have a much more public discussion about some of these issues. Finally, I would say, with respect to the investment, I'm going to try and get a special economic zone or dispensation from the FCC so that we can do more experimentation here in Portland, because I have a bunch of things I want to do for research and development that may change the way we look at frequencies and come up with some better types of technologies that are definitely safer and definitely less scary for people and aesthetically much more pleasing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and honorable council members. My name is Brian Liu, and I'm here today with the Oregon Institute of Creative Research to thank the mayor and commissioners for presenting resolution 227. But I am also here today to urge the city council to implement an urgency ordinance that prohibits wireless telecom facilities in areas zoned residential and require annual EMF readings to determine the wireless facilities within compliance of federal and state laws. I have heard the presentations on the possible avenues forward, which concern the rates we charge telecom companies on infrastructure, but as Commissioner Fritz noted, what are the costs beyond the dollar sign? By enacting an ordinance that prohibits these towers, the city of Portland would be taking a stance alongside California cities like Mill Valley against corporations that have no interest in the health of the city's inhabitants and against the FCC Act, which expedites corporate greed and protects it at the level of federal legislation. I understand the difficulty placed by the FCC. However, Mill Valley's urgency ordinance should set the precedence for what is possible. We are aware, living in our times, the slow unveiling of the systemic inequalities that beleaguer communities of color immigrants and refugees, but we must also be vigilant and wary of what lurks behind what seems like the veil of progress, of technologies deemed inevitable, and of historical movements that feel ordained when discussed from retrospect. deemed inevitable, and of historical movements that feel ordained when discussed from retrospect. I grew up in Hawaii. We should do well to be skeptical of those who would bring sophisticated gifts claiming to be agents of the civilized world. I am no technophobe. I am simply voicing my concern about a technology that has become prolific in our lives and ask whether or not that this technology is good, a question that we have had no time to ponder and a question some very powerful and rich companies do not want us to ask. To rouse the good reverend once more from his sleep, in a letter to Birmingham, from Birmingham Jail, MLK writes, "One has not only a legal but a moral responsibility to obey just laws. Conversely, one has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." I would agree with St. Augustine, an unjust law is no law at all.
Thank you. Next three, please.
The next three are Tracy Fleman Garcia, Maggie, and I'm sorry, I can't read this next name, on Southeast 35th in Portland. How about Barry Sanders? Nick Taylor? Or Tartar, maybe?
I think you have three there, Carla. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name's Trace Fleman Garcia. I am a UC California, University of California certified naturalist. I'm a ecological activist, and I am also with the Oregon Institute for Creative Research. Firstly, I would like to second my colleague Brian Liu's points, and I would like to reiterate them. There simply is not enough research to prove beyond a reasonable thou that this sort of wireless technology is safe for the implementation that is needed for 5G. The research that does exist, such as that undertaken by Trevor G. Marshall.
Sorry.
You all right?
Yep.
Okay, sir.
Where was I? The research that does exist, such as that was undertaken by Dr. Trevor G. Marshall and research fellow Trudy J. Ruman Heil at the Auto Immunity Research Foundation, found that environmental electromagnetic radiation suppresses the immune system in humans. Dr. Marshall and Dr. Heil specifically note that the frequency range of Wi-Fi and cellphones is especially potent. Further, Dr. Michael Repetoli at the Royal Adelaide Hospital in Australia has produced data that cellphone radiation contributes to the onset of cancer in mice, as previously discussed. Other studies have suggested that electrosmog impacts the orientation of birds and insects, contributes to colony collapse disorder in bees, and injures trees in the direct vicinity of cellphone towers. I urge the city council to enact an ordinance to curtail the construction of 5G towers for the sake of human and non-human health. Portland is widely known as a green city, one of the greenest, if not the greenest cities in the United States, and many people, including myself, would like it to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I thought we had three minutes, so I'm going to go very fast. Honorable council members, Mayor Ted Wheeler. My name is Anne Marie Oliver, I'm the founding co-director of the Oregon Institute for Creative Research, whose slogan is Ethics, Aesthetics, Ecology, Education. The Oregon Institute for Creative Research recently held its first workshop on the effects of 5G electromagnetic radiation on humans, animals, and other life forms. What we discovered was appalling. Intensely accelerated efforts to mandate and streamline fifth-generation wireless systems, despite considerable and serious reservations held by people of integrity across all walks of life about the safety of these technologies, lack of precautionary measures, and complete and utter lack of ethical regard, despite studies that demonstrate clear and present dangers of this yet untested new technology. I keep saying new technology, this is a new technology. It's 100 times faster than 4G. Its response time is less than one millisecond. The use of frequencies in the microwave band are between 28 and 39 gigahertz versus 700 megahertz to 3 gigahertz of 4G technology. These cellphone towers will have to be placed perhaps as closely as 100 feet. All the talk about digital inclusion, this is, in my opinion, a smokescreen. It is difficult to escape the conclusion that we are being asked to serve as the subjects of a vast experiment. Although it is rarely noted, experiments used to take place in scientific laboratories, the world now is the laboratory, humans the subjects of an almost limitless experimentation. One can only think here of the preceptor dictum set forth originally by the Austrian media theorist Adolf Kettler. Technical media, he writes, don't arise out of human needs. New technologies are not developed in order to satisfy human needs. Indeed, following Marshall McLuhan, Ivan Illich, Henri Lefebvre, and many others, we can say that these technologies actually create needs.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good afternoon.
Thank you. May I say one thing before I start to Commissioner Fritz? When you asked the question earlier about design of those cell towers, just a cursory look through the web pointed out to me that there are already 200 such towers that exist in the city, most of them, 99% of them owned by people who don't reside in Portland. I think those towers are already here and have gone beyond questions of design. And also for the previous speaker from PDOT, I do think that there is subsidizing going on, that it's more than money, and that is our human subsidy of this project. I begin. Can I have my time back? Thank you. In 1900, Henry Adams, the great grandson of the second president of the United States, sailed to France to visit the Paris Exposition. Standing inside the Palace of Electricity, he found himself overwhelmed by technology. He found himself overwhelmed and also alarmed. He recorded his reactions in the third person in his autobiography, The Education of Henry Adams. The most memorable and frightening part of that book, frightening for Adams and equally unsettling for us, is a chapter titled The Dynamo and the Virgin. Adams realized that the power of technology, symbolized by the 40,000 horsepower dynamo, had usurped the role of religion, symbolized by the Virgin Mary. Three technological marvels startled him: radio waves, radioactivity, and a force known simply as the X-ray. All three circulate invisibly and like specters, elude the senses altogether. The question still haunts: how to understand that which is nonsensical, that which human beings cannot see, or smell, or touch, or even hear, except when something goes wrong like Fukushima? For Henry Adams, the most reassuring invisibility had been religion. When put faith in the unseen and ineffable, Adams could not put his faith in technology because he had no idea of the effect, positive and also greatly negative, of these new powerful invisible rays on the well-being of living things. On March 7, 1918, at age 80, Henry Adams died. March 1919, exactly 100 years ago, The Education of Henry Adams was published. 100 years later, the invisible rays of radiation have intensified, increased, and metastasized. Like the brilliant Henry Adams, the overwhelming majority of us still do not know the effect of those invisible rays on living things. What we do know is that the dynamo has replaced the virgin, which can be seen in the giant cell towers now installed on many churches, replacing spires that once inspired, which is to say that filled the buildings with Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. Can I do my conclusion?
If you make it really quick.
Distinguished members of the council, how's that for an open? You have a great opportunity and a crucial responsibility here. I know you will exercise your authority wisely and make your decision based not on inert facts, but on as much relevant and enlivened facts you can uncover, discover, and recover. Such is the pursuit of knowledge, and it is an undertaking that lies at the heart and soul of education. In the end, it is all we have, this drive to know, to understand, and to make reasoned judgments as a most intimate way of caring for each other. Let us stop and investigate. It is not too much to ask. We cannot care for each other until we care about each other.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next three are Nick Tartar, Emily Hyde, and David Morrison.
And folks, I really would like you to stick to two minutes. We've got several other items, and I don't want to lose our, I don't want to lose our quorum. We've got other items today. Thank you. Well, a very eloquent statement. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, honorable council members, Mayor Ted Wheeler. My name is Nicholas Tartar, I'm also with the Oregon Institute of Creative Research, and we thank you so much for giving us your time today.
Could you pull the microphone over so that the caption can hear you?
Yes, of course. All right. Nicholas Tartar is my name. All right. Thank you so much for giving us your time today. All of us appreciate the opportunity to share our concerns about the unsettlingly uncontroversial implementation of the 5G wireless network in the city of Portland. I will be brief, two minutes in my argument against this largely untested, potentially hazardous, continuous bombardment of high-frequency microwave technology, even though the gravity of the issue should call for hours, if not days, of scrupulous debate. Rather than scrutinize the absurdity of Section 332, Article C of the 1996 Telecommunications Act, which prevents local governments from denying permits to construct cell towers based on environmental and health concerns through threat of litigious retaliation from major cellphone companies, I offer you an example of a community who stood up and said no to towers and won. These were the firefighters of Los Angeles County in California. In 2004, after living and sleeping inside a station near a large cell tower for five years, a group of firefighters complained about memory loss and sleeping disorders. An independent study was conducted by a Los Angeles neurotoxicologist to determine if any unusual brain activity was present in the firefighters. Scans showed brain abnormalities in all of the men tested, including delayed reaction time, lack of impulse control, and cognitive impairment. It was concluded that the exposure to radiation emitted from the cell towers contributed to these negative effects of the otherwise healthy men and women whose job it is to protect the community. After lobbying from the Los Angeles Firefighters Union in Sacramento, Assemblyman Bill Quirk exempted fire stations from Senate Bill 649, or complete deregulation of the telecommunication industry. I was a wildland firefighter for three years in southern Arizona. Immerse in myself in this brotherhood taught me that there is nothing more important to these firefighters in the community than the community they risk their lives to protect. From my experience, I can tell you that being exempt from a harmful threat such as radiation emitted from cell towers, while the rest of the community is unwillingly exposed, is a difficult pill for these men and women to swallow. Knowing that young children, infants, and newborns are continually exposed to this radiation with no escape, while the firefighters are granted exception, undoubtedly affects our sleep just as the cell towers did, if not more.
Thank you.
Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Before I begin, I would like to mention that it is precisely communities of color, the disenfranchised, the poor, the sick, that we should spare, a technology of 5G wireless, just to make mention of that. Thank you kindly, Mayor Wheeler, and commissioners, for your time and consideration. My name is Emily Hyde, and I am also with the Oregon Institute for Creative Research. I was born in Portland, Oregon, and grew up in a small town about 40 minutes east of here. Oregon is my longtime home, and in my opinion, there is no place like it on earth. I'm here on behalf of a beloved friend, who on March 16, 2018, was diagnosed with a likely malignant brain tumor. Despite the extraordinary courage and unbreakable spirit of the woman of whom I speak, over the course of the last year, her condition deteriorated rapidly. She suffered grand mal seizures amounting to loss of consciousness and loss of memory, the loss of the use of her right arm, which amounted to her losing her job and also her capacity to work and do the things she loved. She did not, however, lose the most precious and important thing to her daughter, but this apparently was not enough. She hanged herself just over a month ago on the evening of January 27, 2019. Her 16-year-old daughter, at home at the time, called her father because she suspected something. He told her, "Don't open the door," knowing that this would be the only opportunity he had to protect her from the harrowing sight he himself had to endure as a child discovering his own mother after she had committed suicide. As we know, I'm not sure if something's wrong with the microphone or with me, but as we know, brain tumors are on the rise, and it is the job of survivors and witnesses to determine their cause and to do something about them. The question that is of interest here concerns ethics, the human capacity for morality, and increasingly endangered species in the realm of political affairs. I am not interested only in the subject of human suffering, but also the damage and suffering of the natural world. For what hurts the most are the silent injustices, and this can be most aptly summarized in the faces of the animals and the palpable dryness of the bark upon which they cling.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good afternoon.
David Morrison. When questioned by Senator Blumenthal about the safety of 5G, FCC admitted there's no proof of safety, which defines 5G rollout as human experimentation. Human experimentation is against international laws was established after World War II in Nuremberg. Thank you for bowing to international law, and hopefully you will follow it as well. It cannot be ruled out that the potential damage from these long-term exposures would not equal or even greatly exceed the horrific damage caused by the Holocaust. Sanctuary cities limit their cooperation with federal government enforcing federal immigration law. Whether one agrees with their resistance or not, hopefully you will be willing to disobey federal law because you know it is wrong, rather than upholding industry profits. Are the consequences of obeying federal immigration law more serious than consequences of obeying federal telecommunications law? The consequences of obeying federal telecommunications law have the potential of resulting in many severe illness and premature death. The council has shown willingness to disobey federal law in the immigration situation. Hopefully you'll be doing the same with the telecommunication situation. This act may be, the TC Act may be the greatest offense to local rule of all time. 5G would increase the prospect for continued explosion of healthcare costs as well, which is something you need to consider, and the adverse impact on animal, insect, and plant health, too, would continue to be ignored. We're at a critical point in the fight to restrict exposure to the harmful levels of wireless radiation. Already, studies have shown extensive human damage resulting from previous generations of mobile telecommunications networks. Implementation of 5G would raise potential human damage to unprecedented levels because of the vastly increased density of cell towers required to their proximity to humans. I'll just say one thing, the FCC either has or is poised to reclassify human skin as an extremity so they can increase exposure, and they're already lowering, or raising, lowering the levels of, raising the levels of exposure, which they will be doing soon.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, all three of you. Next three, please, Carla.
Last person who signed up is Mark Coler.
Great. And folks, just a reminder, thumbs up if you like what you're hearing, thumbs down if you don't.
It's Mark Coler.
He wasn't able to make it. I could express a couple of his concerns, if that's okay.
You know, we're behind schedule. I think we heard some really compelling testimony, and we'll stick with what we've got. So any further discussion or any further questions of staff? Very good. First, we will call the roll on item number 227, that is the resolution put forward by Commissioner Fritz.
Fritz.
Thank you, everybody who came to testify today. And to be clear, my goal in formulating this resolution and asking for council support is absolutely to get the FCC to do the studies that they should have done 10 years or more ago. The fact that even under President Obama, we were not able to get them to do it, doesn't take away the need for us to continue to advocate, and hopefully, as more and more jurisdictions start understanding the concerns about health impacts of wireless facilities, eventually there will be a groundswell of public opinion expressed by cities, counties, states, that will force the federal government to do what it should have done many years ago. So that's my goal in putting forward this resolution. Thank you very much to Cynthia Castro on my staff, who did a lot of the groundwork, and also to everybody in the community who has informed us. And obviously, since I sponsored it 10 years ago, I'm sponsoring it again now. This is something that's very concerning to me as a person who uses cellular technology, as a retired registered nurse, as a mother, and as a community member, that, yes, there are many benefits to this technology, and there are also many problems with them. Another of my goals is to make sure that people who supervise younger people, or are in the presence of younger people, whether you're on the bus or out in the public or whatever, just be mindful of the example that you're setting, and limit screen time, using it as a reward rather than as something that is used to distract kids on the bus. There's a favorite dad of mine who gets on the 44 bus often with his son, and occasionally they look at his cellphone, but often the dad will dig out a book from his backpack, and they'll enjoy a book on the way in. There are still alternatives to being glued. There are still alternatives to being glued to your cellphone 24/7, and I encourage all of us to make sure that we take a break many times a day. Aye.
Fish.
Well, I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. We are preempted by the federal government and by the state government on a whole host of health and safety concerns that we have as a city, but this one is particularly offensive since the federal government seems to be willing to operate on the, whatever they don't know is good enough for us. And I appreciate that we are taking the lead and pushing for a comprehensive review of the health implications of 5G wireless technology. Aye.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Udaley.
I just want to thank Commissioner Fritz again for taking the lead on this and for devoting time and attention to it over the last decade. I've already been planning a smartphone detox. Now I'm considering just throwing it out. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Well, while the city of Portland lacks the legal authority to regulate small cells based on either health or environmental impacts, I think it's imperative that we continue to push the federal government to do these studies. I don't know why we would not want to do these studies. Just to give you a comparator, some forty-ish, very prominent scientists in the European Union representing dozens of countries asked the EU to take a look at the health consequences of 5G, and one of the reasons given wasn't just, in addition to identifying potential health risks and potential environmental risks, they also made a strong case that as we continue to see these types of technologies adapted, in order to gain legitimacy with the public, the public needs to have a better understanding of what these technologies are doing and what the potential negative effects are. So to have the FCC basically say there's nothing to see here, having conducted no research, is unsettling to a lot of people for obvious reasons. Of course, we should conduct this research, and so I'm glad that we are pushing forward on this. I appreciate Commissioner Fritz's long-term view on this as well, and I would encourage people who care deeply about it, and we heard a lot of people come here and give eloquent testimony today. The FCC is an agency that can also hear from the public, and I would encourage people to contact the FCC and tell them that you want and you expect our federal government, which also works for you, to conduct this research. I vote aye. Resolution is adopted. Next item, please, is a second reading of item 228.
Fritz.
When we are sworn into office, we swear to uphold the laws of the United States, the State of Oregon, and the City of Portland, and as distasteful as I find this particular law, I am required to follow it. Mr. Morrison, I would have to disagree with you. I don't think we are disobeying federal law on immigration. I think that the National Administration is disobeying federal law on immigration, and we are merely upholding what the laws say. And in this case, I think I appreciate the Office for Community Technology and the Bureau of Transportation for negotiating these agreements. I think it's better than, it's better than the minimum, and since this technology is by right allowed to go in, at the very least, we can expect the companies to pay some of the costs and therefore regret. It's one of these, as was mentioned, a distasteful choice, but this, I believe, is the better of the two choices. Aye.
Fish.
First, I want to just say that we had some superb testimony today, and I appreciate those who put this in a larger moral framework. The problem is, we as decision-makers are caught between a rock and a hard place. As Commissioner Udaley and her PBO team made very clear in the opening presentation, either we're going to be the masters of our own destiny here and negotiate an agreement which is above the anemic thresholds established by the FCC, or these wireless providers are going to simply roll the city and get what they want at a less, with less of an investment. So we're caught between a rock and a hard place. It would be very easy to cast a dissenting vote, just to express outrage at that situation, but we have to observe federal law here, and I think there are several reasons why this particular permit is noteworthy. The first is that it has been negotiated and drafted by the city. The second is that the rates are ten times what the FCC is attempting to impose on jurisdictions like the city of Portland. And the third is that we have been able to bump up the franchise fee and the lease fee. Now, that is no solace for someone that looks at this in the context of an experiment on public health and shifting the cost to our local community, but the net effect of us not embracing and accepting the terms which have been negotiated that are before us is we will likely get a substantially less attractive deal rammed down our throat. That's why we're caught between a rock and a hard place, and for that reason, and with the same reservations that my colleagues have expressed, I vote aye.
Hardesty.
We've heard a lot about the health impacts, the environmental impact, and I'm still very unsure about how low-income communities and communities of color will see any benefit from this new technology. While the FCC rules are clear, and I'm grateful to PDOT and Commissioner Udaley's staff for working out an extremely better deal than the minimum that is required by the FCC, I have an obligation to vote my conscience, and my conscience says, I vote no.
Udaley.
Well, I want to thank PBO's staff, Noah Siegel and Ann Hill, as well as City Attorney Maya Hame and Elizabeth Perez from the mayor's office for their work on this item. I share my colleagues' regrets and concerns. I think that Commissioner Fish adequately summed up the position we're in, the decision that we're making today. We, it's unfortunate that we are often in the position of having to protect our community from our own federal government, that we're not able to devote our time to advancing and furthering the good work that we need to get done, but in this instance, I do feel that this better protects our interests, and I vote aye.
Wheeler.
The moral and philosophical questions which were raised today are certainly thought-provoking, and they are worthy of continued discussion. And I'm sorry, I always have to be the guy holding the timer and telling people to stop, but I assure you, I took a lot of notes, and I'll be doing a lot of research based on what was said today. I also want to take the pragmatic view on this particular item. This item renews AT&amp;T's authority to use the public right-of-way to serve Portland residents. This negotiated outcome comes in the midst of the national discussion around the rollout of 5G and this pressing question about the federal government's right to lay claim to public right-of-way and public infrastructure, for which the taxpayers of this jurisdiction have paid literally billions of dollars over the years and hundreds of millions of dollars to maintain. And it has been the city of Portland's position, our strong position, that that is our infrastructure, that our residents and taxpayers own it, and that we get to establish the standards and the rates by which we rent that infrastructure to private sector companies. And so I'm pleased with the work that has been done by city staff on this to help negotiate what I think was a fair settlement even before we got into this conversation about the FCC and this question of local control. I want to thank everybody who worked so hard on this. I want to particularly thank the Transportation Bureau, Ann Hill from PBO, Elizabeth Perez, who's here today representing the Office of Community Technology, and others who worked so hard on this. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. And with regard to item 234, this is a first reading of an on-emergency ordinance. Move to second reading as amended. Carla, could you please call item 226 next? We now have staff in the room.
Amend affordable housing preservation and Portland renter additional protections to make technical changes following adoption of SB 608. Other technical changes and clarify the affordable housing exemption.
Colleagues with the city's, Commissioner Fritz.
Before you get started, excuse me, I just want to have an idea of what's the plan for the rest of the agenda.
To move expeditiously. Let's try and get out of here. We have left.
About an hour. Yeah, this.
Well, we could move some to.
I think we need to do that.
Two, 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 three.
No, it's right. We've got the space between the two o'clock.
Let's do this, and could we take a look at the remainder of the agenda? Michelle, could you work with staff and see if there are some that we can put off until this afternoon? And let's, and then we'll come back after this item, and we'll see where our, Commissioner Fish.
So, for example, I mean, I don't know who just picked up on that, but we have the one-hour bike town, then there's a gap. So, you know, I've got people from the Bureau of Environmental Services that are on hold during their lunch hour for a presentation, which is not a very complicated presentation, but I'm happy to volunteer to see if we can move those to the afternoon, to take those two off.
Okay.
That's 2:30 and 2:31.
That's 2:30 and 31, okay. So 2:30 and 2:31, we will move after the 2 PM time certain, because my, under, my expectations, we're going to have a gap there, right, between the two time certens?
Yes. I do think, Mayor, I do think 229 is going to go longer than 15 minutes. I have a bunch of questions, and I know we have an amendment on 233, but that's pretty straightforward.
Okay, so let's plan on 230. Let's remove that from this morning's agenda. Let's remove 231 from this morning's agenda. We'll put them into the afternoon agenda, and what I will attempt to do is move those two items between the time certain items this afternoon. So that only leaves.
233, which I hope you could do before.
Okay, and how much time do you think you need?
I think that's going to be very quick.
Okay, and 233 is actually a second reading, but you've got some amendments, so we'll take some testimony on the amendments. I don't anticipate that'll take very long, so we can do that this morning as well, after 226, and that's all we have left, correct, for the morning session?
About 229. Where's that?
Oh, did I skip 229?
Yeah. Would that be moved?
Uh, yeah, that's a short one. Let's move 229 to the afternoon session as well, and I apologize to staff who've been waiting patiently for that, but let's go ahead and do that. So with regard to 22, does that plan work for everybody?
Yes.
Good. 226, with the city's permanent mandatory relocation assistance policy and exemptions having now been in place for a full year, and with the recent adoption of Senate Bill 608 in the Oregon Legislature, there's some technical changes that are needed to maintain the city's current policies and improve our understanding of the exemptions. I think everybody here understands that renters continue to rely on strong tenant protections to provide stability and prevent displacement in Portland's challenging rental housing markets. We also know that communities of color are disproportionately impacted, as are renters of low income, and so policies like the city's re-low ordinance continue to be critically important to our city and those who call Portland home. With that, I'll turn this over to the Housing Bureau. Shannon Callahan, Director Callahan, welcome. Thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Hearing what you have left on your agenda and knowing that you need to take a lunch, we'll try to be as quick as possible going over the technical corrections that are within this ordinance. We are bringing you a reconciliation related to Senate Bill 608, which was recently passed by the Oregon Legislature. We are clarifying a couple of key places in the ordinance that don't change the policy but add clarity to both landlords and tenants, and we are narrowing the exemption for affordable housing providers. As you may recall, when this ordinance was permanently adopted in March of last year, council directed us to convene stakeholders to narrow and refine the affordable housing exemption. And so I'm going to turn it over to Matthew Shabel to talk with you about the portion that relates to Senate Bill 608.
Matthew Shabel for the record. So really quickly, I'll walk through the graphic to give an overview of how city relocation assistance worked prior to Senate Bill 608 and now the impact that 608 is in effect. So if you're looking at the left portion of your screen, prior to 608, in the first 12 months of tenancy, again, this is a broad generalization. There are specific nuance. In the first 12 months, landlords were not allowed to increase the rent, but they could use, outside of a fixed-term lease, a no cause, forecause, and non-renewal to terminate a tenancy, and the no cause and the non-renewal, both would trigger city relocation assistance. After the first 12 months of tenancy, a landlord could increase the rent by any amount, but if it was 10% or more over a rolling 12 months, that would trigger city relocation assistance. In addition, to terminate the tenancy, a landlord could issue a no cause, forecause, or non-renewal of tenancy. After Senate Bill 608, the main, the main point I'd like to make is the first 12 months is relatively similar. After 12 months of occupancy, rent stabilization goes into effect for units that are 15 years or older, and that rate for this year is 10.3%, and for terminations of tenancy, a landlord can only use a qualifying reason or a forecause outside of some minor exceptions. And so the reconciliation around city relocation assistance really has to do with this second 12, or after 12 months of tenancy, when terminating a rental agreement. If you're looking at the table and the two columns, essentially, without going through every example, there are relatively six-ish reasons that are considered qualifying landlord reasons for termination of the rental agreement, and on the right side, you'll note when, prior to 608, that kind of circumstance would have required city relocation assistance. And I'll just use the middle one as an example. Prior to 608, if a landlord terminated a tenancy to repair or renovate the unit, they would have had to pay city relocation assistance. And without these code changes, if a landlord terminated a rental agreement with a qualifying landlord reason termination, without the changes to the city code, relocation assistance would not be in effect. So that's one example of why we're bringing forward this reconciliation. So if you're looking specifically at the code, you know, adding subsection B is simply adding the qualifying landlord reason as a termination type that triggers city relocation assistance. We are eliminating a 60-day hybrid with the city's 90-day notice, because for the most part, after 12 months of tenancy, the state has moved to 90-day notice, so our code is in conflict. And then we, and this is an important part in subsection H, should the state, should a landlord pay one month's rent as relocation assistance, because when a landlord with five or more units issues a termination for a qualifying landlord reason, they owe one month's rent in relocation, then the landlord can reduce the city relocation requirement by that amount. So effectively, the, a Portland renter is getting the same level of relocation assistance. So if, prior to 608, a landlord would have paid $4,500 to a renter, they would still pay $4,500. We're simply saying that the state payment can be inclusive of that. So that's, that is a change. I would note that for that to occur, the landlord would have to pay the relocation assistance, the state and city.
One second. Commissioner Hardesty had a question.
Sorry, would you say that again? So what I heard was that the landlord would pay the state?
Sorry, no, Commissioner. So the state, if a landlord owns more than four units, requires that when they issue a qualifying landlord termination, have to, they have to pay the renter one month's rent in relocation. So if the landlord is obligated to pay the one-month rent to the tenant under state law, the subsection H provision allows them to reduce the city relocation assistance that they pay to the renter by that amount. So it ensures that renters in Portland are getting the somewhere between $29 and $4,500 city relocation payment total, and the landlord is paying that total amount, just discounting the state payment. the state payment, state-required payment to the renter. So the one caveat I want to do, put out there, is that that payment, to be able to discount it, has to occur as a single payment and at the same time, so... Okay, I'll turn it back to you.
Commissioner Hirsty has another question.
Thank you. One last question. So the legislation passed by the state does not weaken Portland's rental assistance program, or does it?
No, and there were statements on the record made, both in committee and on the floor, I believe, on the floor, as far as legislative intent, that the bill was not structured to preempt any local jurisdiction from supplemental tenant protections.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further questions for our esteemed and very patient panel? Do we have public testimony on this item, Carla?
Yes, we have two people signed up.
Very good.
Curtis Faith and Jessica Greenlee.
Come on up. Two minutes, name for the record, please. Thank you both. I bet you can't believe you waited three and a half hours to speak for five minutes, huh? But we value it. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Curtis Michael Faith, again. I just wanted to briefly talk about the subject of housing affordability and the comprehensive nature of the problem, and it's --
That's not what this item is about.
Well, I'm specifically going to relate it to the -- this amendment provision, because I think that one of the things that we run into is that these issues are complicated for people to understand, and that when you have lawyers talking about these issues at city council meetings, and we're talking about specific bills and changes that are made, it makes it very difficult for individuals to follow. So I don't believe that there's any problem with this particular amendment proposal at all, but I do believe that there is a problem with the process being so complicated for those who are affected to being able to follow it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Jessica Greenlee. I am on the Rental Services -- oh, sorry.
Thanks.
It was on.
Oh, it was on.
Okay, sorry.
Maybe move it a little closer.
Here, I'll pull it towards me. I'm a little short. My name is Jessica Greenlee, and I'm actually on the Rental Services Commission and work for Affinity Property Management. And it is nice to see that some of the changes that are being inducted in the code more closely aligned the city ordinance with the state bill. However, I do still have some concerns surrounding it. There are additional changes, and I'd like to use an example of a frivolous case that was recently brought against one of our clients, in that the utility amount of a variable-rate utility, because it's based on usage, was not expressly stated in a notice, and we were sued for $750,000 over that. And so, because the ordinance does not have a -- or any ordinance really should have a prevailing-party attorney fee provision included in that. Although Judge Madarazzo ruled last Friday that, in fact, we did fully comply with the ordinance, and that actually the ordinance itself is unenforceable because of the state preemption based on 90.115, 9427, and 91255, it still is very expensive to defend those claims. And so, I would like to see city council keep that in mind when looking at structuring ordinances, to make sure that there is a deterrent for frivolous lawsuits built into such items. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Appreciate it. Is that it?
That's all who signed up.
Very good. Any further conversation on this? This is an emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Fritz?
I don't necessarily agree with all of the stipulations in this code on -- and yet, what is being presented today is conforming the state law to the code that the majority of council adopted, and therefore, I vote aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hirsty?
Aye.
Udaley?
When we passed the first temporary relocation assistance ordinance in 2017, we had high hopes for its ability to create a lifeline for vulnerable tenants teetering on the edge of homelessness. I'm pleased to say, two years later, that not only does data demonstrate that it works, but I believe it was one of several catalysts that spurred greater tenant protections for residents, all renting residents in the state of Oregon through SB 6088. I'm thankful that the legislature did not preempt our existing policy, which was an explicit promise made to me, and I am grateful that the Housing Bureau and the mayor's office has worked so swiftly to align the policies and uphold the commitment we made to Portland tenants. I want to thank Housing Bureau staff, especially Matt Schebold, Policy and Planning Manager, and Director Shannon Callahan. I also want to thank the mayor's staff, including Senior Policy Advisor Cupid Alexander and Legislative Director Michelle Plumbek. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
I want to thank the Housing Bureau for this hard work. I want to thank my team for their efforts on this. This is a good, rational response to keep our ordinance in alignment with state law, and this comports with all the conversations and representations that were made by the legislature as they passed Senate Bill 668. Thank you. The ordinance is adopted. Last but not least, item number 233. It's a second reading, but I understand Commissioner Hirsty has some amendments?
Yes.
Letter reader.
Authorize Portland Fire and Rescue to charge a fee for service for cost recovery of non-emergent lift assist responses to Oregon State Licensed Commercial Assisted Living, Residential Care, and Nursing Facilities within the city.
Commissioner Hirsty.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council colleagues. You might remember, was this just last week, that we had a very fruitful conversation around this particular ordinance. I want you to know that we heard the testimony from everyone and thought we had a very positive interaction. As you can see, I have my interim fire chief here, and I have the industry representative who had some concerns about what we were proposing. A lot of people did a lot of work in the last week to get us back to today, and I will now turn it over to our esteemed panel.
Good afternoon. I'm interim fire chief Ryan Gillespie.
For the record, Jim Carlson, President of the Oregon Healthcare Association.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. I'll reintroduce myself. Ryan Gillespie, interim fire chief for Portland Fire and Rescue. Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to come back and speak to this. We'll be brief, as we know, this session ran long today. After the first reading, two weeks ago, we had the opportunity to hear from industry as well as the Fire Bureau perspective on this. Following that, we met, and we were able to collaborate together to come to an agreement on some change in language in the ordinance, which is agreeable to Portland Fire and Rescue and also agreeable to the industry. And I'll let Mr. Carlson speak to that. I also want to say, we took the Commissioners' questions and thoughts into rebuilding this or rewording this, and Commissioner Fritz, you had some concerns and some input about the letter that we would be sending to facilities. So we have worked with your office. We do have language that we will be including in the letter to facilities that will specifically be addressed to the employees of those facilities, to make sure they have the resources that they need when this ordinance, when and if this ordinance passes.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add is, we appreciated the opportunity for the discussion with the council. I think the proposed amendments you have in front of you address the primary concerns we had, as well as took into account some of that good discussion we had. And I really want to thank and acknowledge Chief Gillespie and his team for being so collaborative, and I want to thank Commissioner Hirsty and your staff for also being so responsive to the concerns. So thank you.
Commissioner Fish?
So, Mr. Carlson, what is the likelihood that any of your member organizations will simply shift the cost to any particular individual that needs the service?
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Fish, first off, probably better than two-thirds of the payment received for services in these settings are Medicaid or Medicare, and so we're essentially price-takers, not price-setters, in that particular marketplace for the most part. I will tell you, all costs of goods and services and service delivery in the private-pay market, right, will get reflected in that, but I would say predominantly in this marketplace, you have public payers purchasing services.
So is that -- I'm trying to figure out whether that's reassuring or not.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Fish, what I will say is --
You know, it's an interesting difference. My friend and colleague, Commissioner Hirsty, served in the legislature, and there's a tradition of speaking to the --
The chair.
Chair, and then the member.
Yes.
We don't actually have that tradition, but it's interesting that you've been acknowledging the mayor.
I'm a Salem creature.
I think it's great.
You stick with the mayor.
No, it's good.
But you're not required to do it here, but so what -- so why should I be reassured? Because the concern is here that we not just shift the cost to the people who need the floor.
So Commissioner Fish, what I would say, first off, one of the concerns that has been addressed in the proposed amendment, you'll see on the cost recovery on the fee, we've gone to a graduated fee schedule, so we start off at a more modest fee, a $200 fee on that first call. It goes to $450 on the second, and then it jumps up higher than what was proposed. Part of what we are hoping to do is work collaboratively with Portland Fire and Rescue to reduce dramatically inappropriate calls that are not necessary. And also, in follow-up on some of the conversation we had in discussion with council from Commissioner Fritz and others, I've followed up on what other options are out there to provide lift assist beyond calling 911 and Portland Fire and Rescue. And we've identified maybe a couple of pretty good potential opportunities out there that we are planning to follow up on that could assist.
And now that we've made this connection and worked together to get the ordinance reworded acceptably, we will continue. This relationship is not ending here. We will continue to work with industry to make sure that we can do anything we can to assist them moving forward by doing outreach and training and working with OHCA.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hirsty. Commissioner Fritz?
Colleagues, and thank you to the Fire Bureau for working with me, allowing my input into the letter. I've handed it out. It doesn't need to be an amendment because the letter isn't part of the ordinance, but essentially, I think the wording we've agreed to is, as part of the letter, that Portland Fire and Rescue also recommends that these facilities provide notice of assistance options to employees who are concerned about workplace hazards related to lifting patients, including mechanisms to contact management, contact information for complaints to the Oregon Bureau of Labor and Industries, and union representative information where applicable. And so that addresses my concern that we don't have frail caregivers getting workplace injuries from just not having the heft to be able to help people out.
Very good. And for clarification purposes, Commissioner, you're suggesting this does not require an amendment?
Correct, because the letter is not part of the ordinance.
Very good. And legal counsel concurs with that? Very good. Is there anything else, then? Very good. This is a second reading, second reading of a non-emergency ordinance. Please call the roll.
Do we have to --
Do we have a motion for the Commissioner Hirsty's amendment?
She's not amending it. I -- we just -- I thought --
She is.
That was the question I was just asking.
Yeah, there's other amendments.
So there is an amendment. What we have in front of us --
Sorry, Mayor, sorry for the confusion. What we have in front of us today is an amended ordinance. It is not the same one we had before. The difference in this ordinance is that we have a graduated fee schedule that -- so the first time is 200, and then it increases from there. Again, the goal is not to penalize organizations for calling 911, but to make sure that when they call, they're calling for the right reason.
Okay, just to clarify.
I think this is the first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. We take testimony.
This is a substitute effect, please.
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, good. So, we are in a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance, but we've now opened up an exhibit, therefore, we can take testimony on that item if people so wish. Is there anybody who wants to testify on this? Hearing none? This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance, it moves to second reading. We are adjourned. We need a motion.
I move that we accept the amendment to the ordinance.
It's a substitute.
The substitute amendment.
And you -- Second it. So, everything I said previously now applies.
All in favor?
Call the roll.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hirsty?
Aye.
Udaley?
Thank you, Commissioner Hirsty, and for these amendments, and all my concerns have been addressed. Thank you for working together. I vote aye.
Sorry. Wheeler.
Thank you for meeting, hearing the concerns that were expressed, working it out. I vote aye. So the substitute is now on the table.
Yes, and this is an emergency -- one of the amendments was an emergency clause, so we're --
Oh, we do -- so we need a motion?
Yes, that's the amendment that Derek gave me.
Okay, and so you want to put the emergency clause on, is that correct?
That was one of the amendments that Derek submitted.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. Call the roll.
It's on the ordinance as amended.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Hirsty?
I just want to thank you. This is a wonderful -- this was a wonderful process. We got to a better result because of everybody's input. Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. So now, the emergency ordinance is on. Call the roll on the substitute as amended. Thank you.
Fritz?
Aye, again.
Fish?
Aye.
Hirsty?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Same long speech I gave before. Aye.
Thank you.
The substitute as amended is adopted, and we are really adjourned.
Thank you.